Good morning. The Board of Appeal for Tuesday, July 9th is now in session. Just a reminder, please, if you are in the middle of a conversation in the back of the room, please take it outside. And if you have cell phones, please make sure they're off. In conformance with the open meeting law, this meeting is being livestreamed, so you can access it later should you have the desire to. Just a reminder, please, when you speak in support or in opposition to a project, please give us new information. We are here on a voyage of discovery from you to really understand what your concerns are or why you're supporting a project, so give us new information. And if somebody has already stated the reason for your support or your opposition, put your name and address for the record. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. The first order of business, the extension, calling case BOA 715-581-44 Lockdale Road. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman, Mr. Secretary and members of the Board. My name is Andrew Cara. I'm an attorney here in Boston at Rubin and Rudman, having the address of 53 State Street.
So tell us the reason for the request.
Forty-four Lockdale Road is an existing two-story self-storage facility. On July 25th, 2017, the Board granted zoning relief to allow for a proposed three-story addition to the existing facility. Due to recent changes to the project, the project has been delayed. As a result of these changes, we're requesting a one-year extension of the existing zoning relief.
And what kind of changes?
Reducing the height of the proposed project from three stories to two stories for the addition.
Okay.
Make a motion for a one-year extension.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling the next case for extension, calling BOA 486-152-270 Dorchester Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Mark Lacass-Lacass-Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the applicant. Two-seventy Dorchester Ave was approved by this Board on July 14, 2017, and a request is hereby made for a one-year extension. Subsequent to the approvals, the project was purchased by a new owner, who then filed a notice of project change with the BPDA, switching the form of the units approved from rental to ownership. And they are nearing completion of a full set of construction drawings, with construction expected to commence this fall. So request is made for a one-year extension of the prior relief.
So other than that, there's no change in unit size or the number of units or anything?
Correct. The sole change approved by the BPDA Board was the form of ownership.
Okay.
Make a motion for a one-year extension.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Calling the next two cases for extension, calling BOA 725-791-224-Wardsworth Street. Companion case, BOA 725-794-68-Wardsworth Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, this Board granted relief to allow the subdivision and the construction of two two-family dwellings at 2-8 Wardsworth Street in East Boston. That was back in August of 2017, August 15th. We've been in the process of finalizing the construction plans and have received designer review approval from the BPDA for this project. The delay essentially is a result of an encroaching neighbor on the property that we've been dealing with, so once that's resolved, we should be ready to receive a permit.
How close are you to resolution?
Very close.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Motion for a one-year extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next case, calling Board Final Arbiter, calling BOA 779-357-29-31 Ward Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Secretary and Chair of the Board, Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott Colton Miller, 28 State Street in Boston. With me is David O'Sullivan, who is the project architect, as well as Developers Representative, Joe Hennessy. You should have revised plans that were provided. This is a nine-unit new residential condominium development that was approved by the Board by decision on August 17th last summer. Since that time, and it was approved with a proviso for BPDA design review, as part of that process and as directed by the BPDA, we have been asked to make some modifications to the main entry lobby, which results in removing one of the compact parking spaces, of which we got relief. So it was approved for nine units and 10 parking spaces. We're now nine units and nine parking spaces, and the result is to improve the street scape of the building.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, the building code, calling BOA 953-863-205 Webster Street. This is amendment, remove the construction of a stair tower associated with the rear decks, revise level for framing plan, add construction to and stair enclosure between floors three and four, and the replacement of stairs and change sprinkler design to an NFPA 13R partial installation. The violation is the eighth edition 780 CMR 1021, number of exits and continuity. Ten twenty-one point two stories with one exit, subject to the building, is not equipped fully with the code-compliant sprinkler system. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David C. McCartney. I'm a building code consultant representing the owners of this three-family residential condominium. And ALTA has handed you a package of materials that I provided for you to help you decide this case today. And let me take you just through what-
Just let's ask you a question. Is this, this is in relation to, is there an appeal with this or it's purely building code relief?
Purely building code.
So the-
There was a previous zoning relief granted to allow the extra story on this building, but that's not the subject of the hearing today.
Okay, so this is for, so the extra story is all taken care of?
Yes.
So the extra story would bring it up to five stories, is it?
No, four stories, ma'am.
Four stories. So this talks about revise framing plan and add construction of a stair enclosure between floors three and four?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
If I may, let me just walk you through the materials I've given you. I've given you some of the plans that were submitted with the project, plan view of the front and back of the building, and a section-
Excuse me for one second. Mr. Ehrlich, have you had a chance to look this over prior?
I have.
Okay. Go ahead.
I've given you a plan view of the front and back of the building, a section view through the building, and an eleven-and-a-half-by-seventeen drawing that shows the layout of each of the floors in the building. Given you some before and after pictures that show the building before the addition of the fourth story and after. Quite an improvement, I think. Given you a copy of an email from Tom O'Donnell at ISD to the project architect, which is pertinent to this matter. I've given you a copy of section ten twenty-one point one, and in particular, exception number four, which is the main section of code that leads us to this dispute. Also given you a copy of table-
So this is the number of exits? Tell us, tell us what the core issue here is that you're seeking relief on?
Okay.
Is that the number of exits?
The core issue here, ma'am, is that the unit number three, which is the third and fourth floor of the building, only has one exit at this point. And our contention is that the code allows it to have one exit. And that's what I wanted to testify about today. If you'll-
Are you a building code consultant?
I am, and I've attached my CV to the end of the package.
Okay.
I've basically been working my whole life in building codes.
So tell us, I think this might be the first time you're before this Board?
In quite some years, ma'am.
Yes, so tell us exactly if there's resolution or not, and what options you've explored.
Okay. Well, the, the, maybe try to present it in the best way I can. The project that we're here before started some time ago, as you know. It's under the eighth edition of the building code. And the approval was granted to add the fourth floor, and originally, there was a stair tower on the back of the building. It was intended to serve as the second exit for the third-floor unit. It was in pretty tough shape. At some point, the plan was made to remove it. The appellant tried to propose a circular stair as a second means of egress from the third-floor unit, which ISD refused. Then the appellant became aware of section ten twenty-one point one, and in particular, exception number four. What that exception says in group R2, which is what we have here, a three-family dwelling, group R2 and R3 occupancies, one means of egress is permitted within and from individual dwelling units, the maximum occupant load of 20, where the dwelling unit is equipped with an automatic sprinkler system in accordance with section 903.3.1.1 or 903.3.1.2.
So is it, is it being sprinkled?
I'm sorry, ma'am?
Is it being sprinkled?
The unit is sprinkled. It is currently sprinkled. The appellate brought in water service, new water service to the building to sprinkle this unit. The appellate also provided a two-hour enclosure between the third floor and the stair tower that serves the second floor and below.
Okay, hold on one second, Mr. Ehrlich.
Yeah. I looked over these prints, and it's my understanding that for that exception to the single means of egress, the entire building has to be sprinkled, not just the unit.
Well, that's the-
Let me finish.
Sure.
And if you're saying that, and that is, yes, you're right, that is the contention of ISD, but if you're saying that that's not a violation of the building code, then you don't need building code relief, because you're arguing that it's compliant with the building code.
I have-
So if it doesn't need building code relief, then there's no need for this Board to grant you building code relief. And I would make a motion that we deny building code relief for this project.
If I may-
So I'm sorry, what is, what is the motion, Mr. Ehrlich?
Motion is denied building code relief for the project.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry, it's been denied.
I'm going to be calling the 9:30 hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30? Counselor, address?
Sixty-three, excuse me, sixty-three Horace Street.
For the record, both of the cases, calling BOA 919-213-63-HORACE STREET. There is also a companion case, BOA 919-215-63-HORACE STREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, requesting a deferral for this matter. There will be an update to the plan, and we do need to file that with ISD, determine that there are no further violations with respect to the updated plan. Request a deferral for that matter.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? What's the address again? I'm sorry?
Sixty-three Horace.
Horace.
Horace, okay. And the date, please?
We have a date of September 10th.
September 10th at 11:30. Okay?
Address, please? Oh, you got one?
Forty William Kelly Square.
I'm sorry, say that address again, please?
Forty William C. Kelly Square.
And this is Ward one?
Correct.
Oh, okay, there we go. Calling BOA 920014, Forty William C. Kelly Square. Name and address for the record, please.
Again, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. Madam Chair, we've had a chance to have a conversation with both the District City Counselor, as well as the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services on this one. This is one of those cases where a new community group was formed. We have presented to the community group that originally had jurisdiction over this area. The new community group has now taken over that area. We've not had a chance to present to them, although we have made community presentations as well in the Butters meeting. We've agreed to go back and make a presentation before the new community group in order for them to provide input for the project.
When is that scheduled for?
We don't have a scheduled date yet. I would ask, if possible, for an October date to give us enough time to get in front of their Board.
And hopefully resolve any issues, because you know how we are about deferrals.
I understand that, thank you.
So may I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please?
October 8th at 11:30.
Thank you.
The address, please?
Address, please?
One fifty-four, one fifty-six Bayswater Street. And we're seeking a request for a deferral-
Hold on a second, sir. Other record, calling BOA 934-019, one fifty-four to one fifty-six Bayswater Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Frank Delmuto, 127 Byron Street, East Boston.
And what are you requesting?
We're requesting a deferral for this review for another meeting, based on, we have some updating of plans to do as a result of site design by the engineer, by the engineer which we're currently analyzing now. It will affect the site design, ultimately the proposed site design, and possibly the proposed front elevation, which was part of our community process.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We have a date of September 10th.
September 10th at 11:30.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30? Hearing number, call the first case, calling BOA 937-967-46-Utah STREET. This is seeking to confirm the occupancy as a two-family dwelling in store, and then change the occupancy to a three-family dwelling, also to add a two-story addition and renovate the building. The violation is Article 27-T-5. This is in the East Boston IPod applicability. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking, loading insufficient parking. Article 53, Section 8, the use of regulations is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 9, the number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback. And Article 53, Section 52, roof structure restrictions. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Attorney Matt Eckle with Dregone Toscano with the business address of 15 Broad Street here in Boston. With me is Sharon Manager, the owner of 46 Utah Street. As mentioned, we're seeking to change the occupancy from a two-family and a store to a three-family, add a two-story addition to even out the building and renovate the structure. Even though it's classified as a store, it hasn't been used as such in a number of years throughout our community process. No one could even remember it being used as a store, and had been used as kind of an illegal studio apartment. So we're seeking to rectify that and officially change the occupancy. The lot size is just over 1,100 square feet, and the zoning district is a 2F 2,000. All the violations that were mentioned are pre-existing with the existing structure. As mentioned, use is a violation. It's a two-family district. However, this is pre-existing because it's a two-family and a store, and we're seeking to change it to a three-family. The FAR allowed is .8. We're at about 3.0. The height allowed is two-and-a-half stories and 35 feet. We're proposing three stories and 37 feet, which on the second page you can see is the existing height of the tallest part of the structure as it's currently constituted. Off-street parking, we're required to have one new space, however, because we're taking away the storefront, that's negated, because it's a one, we need one, and we're taking away one essentially for that store use. Finally, we are in the IPod, and the side and rear yards are not changing. Those are pre-existing violations as well.
So tell us about the roof structure restrictions.
So-
Is there a roof deck on this?
We were not cited for a roof structure restriction. There is a roof deck proposed, which would be exclusive to unit three, which is on the third floor. In the basement, there'd be common mechanicals and storage. Those would be accessed separately from Marion Street, which is, this is on the corner of Marion and Utah. And the remainder of the lower level would be unit one, with two bedrooms and a bath, with a ceiling height of 7'6". As you go up to the first floor, that's the rest of unit one, which contains another bedroom and one-and-a-half baths. The second floor contains unit two, and the third floor contains unit three, both of which are two-bedroom units at about 950 square feet. We did go through a lengthy community process with particular attention to the design of the building, to make sure it fit in with historic Eagle Hill. Again, as you see the existing picture on page two, it doesn't really fit in with anywhere right now, so we worked with the Eagle Hill Civic Association to really get a design that works for everyone, and we were able to ultimately get the support of the Eagle Hill Civic Association. And with that, I'll pause and take any further questions.
So what's the access to the roof deck?
It'll be through a hatch directly through unit three.
Okay.
The drawings are adequate. The basement height?
Seven-six.
Seven-six. Okay, thank you.
And there'll be window wells?
There'll be windows, yes. You can see on the, yeah, rendering.
Any other questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. This project got the support from the Eagle Hill Civic Association, and they appreciate the design. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Ricardo Patrone from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The Counselor would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Calling BOA 920011, 74 Everett Street. This is a change of occupancy from a three-to-a-four unit residential dwelling, construct a rear addition and rear deck, construct a fourth-floor vertical addition on an existing footprint, and extend living space to the basement for unit one. Violation is Article 27-T-5, it's in the East Boston IPod. Article 53, Section 8, a multifamily dwelling is a forbidden use. Article 53, Section 52, roof structure restrictions. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, additional lot area is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 53, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, front yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, side yard is insufficient. And Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, with me is Michael Rabb, who's the property owner, along with Trea Larea from Joy Street Design, who's the architect for this project. Madam Chair, this is a pre-existing three-family dwelling, semi-detached, located in the Jefferies Point neighborhood, section of East Boston. It is in, I guess, marginal condition, requiring a substantial investment in rehabilitation. Our proposal is to do a complete rehab of the building, God bless you, complete rehab of the building, which would include upgrades to life safety, as well as a vertical addition, adding a fourth level. This proj-
How long has this owner owned this property?
Roughly about-
Over a year.
Two years, okay.
Yeah. So the process actually started in earnest, maybe about eight months ago, to get this through the community process, to come up with a plan for upgrade and rehabilitation. As I said, this upon completion would be intended for homeownership. This would create four separate new condominium units in the neighborhood. The unit sizes range, three of those units would be two bedrooms, one would be a one-bedroom plus. The sizes of the units range from 945 square feet at the smallest, to about 1,370 square feet for the larger two-bedroom. The fourth level that we are proposing is set back from the street line, both in the rear. The roof deck that is cited, or the rooftop restrictions that cited in the refusal letter refer to the actual roof deck that is part of that fourth-level unit. There is no roof deck proposed above the fourth level, so no headhouse and no roof deck above the top of the building. With respect to the zoning relief that's necessary, this does lie within the 3F 2,000 district. Therefore, a proposed multifamily use would require a variance. There are a number of multifamily uses within this particular section of Everett Street, and it's consistent with the types of uses in that area. This does have a conforming lot size. It does have the minimum lot size of 2,000, just in excess of 2,000 square feet, and we do meet the requirements for frontage. We were cited for front yard, however, I would point out that the modal setback for the rowhouses on this street is pretty-
It's all existing, so-
It's pretty consistent, correct. As well as the side yard, we are attached on one side, therefore no requirement for a side yard on that side. The only side yard violation that we would trigger involves the vertical addition at the fourth level, because that would be within two-and-a-half feet of the lot line. I would point out there is a passageway to the left of the building, so that would allow for a sufficient amount of buffer, as if a side yard was present.
Talk about the parking, off-street parking?
So the pre-existing condition is a three-unit building with no parking. The proposed unit would only trigger a violation for one required parking space under Article 53. So we aren't proposing the parking. But again, this is one of those situations that, assuming we even could put the parking on site, we would be sacrificing one-and-a-half parking spaces on-street to cut a driveway to bring a, to bring parking in.
The rear passageway doesn't allow for that?
We would not be allowed to. We wouldn't be able to access the rear of the property based upon that.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. This project got the support from the Gulf Street Citizens and Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board. Ricardo Patrone from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The Counselor would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please? And just to note that the BRA is recommending design review with no building code relief. May I have a motion, please?
Is there a request for building code relief?
There's no request for building code relief.
I'll make a motion then to approve the project with BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Calling BOA 942-964-3-Morton Place. This is to add a front and rear dormers by expanding the existing small shed dormers. The violation is Article 27-T-5, it's in the East Boston IPod. Article 53, Section 9, the FAR. Article 53, Section 9, rear yard setback. Article 53, Section 9, front yard setback. And Article 53, Section 9, the side yard setback. Name and address for the record, please.
The drawings are adequate. Three more in place?
Ramon Vierzani, homeowner.
So tell us briefly, homeowner, what you're proposing to do.
So on the second-floor unit, so this is a two-family unit, so on the, the second unit, we're essentially just interested, we're looking forward to adding dormers. Right now, I mean, I'm six feet, so the usable space is probably about seven or so feet. Pretty much, the pitch of the roof is to the point where the two bedrooms for the second floor, which are on this, the second-floor unit, aren't fully usable, so they don't have the walking space. It's more like walking into an attic, almost.
So that second-floor unit, what is anticipated to be? Is that anticipated to be a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom?
It's currently a two-bedroom, and so what we're trying to do-
So it's just-
Yeah, we're trying to expand out. So the, pretty much, the living area isn't going to be added.
And what about the first floor?
The first floor would remain the same.
How many square feet is that?
I believe the first floor...
Fourth floor will be 450 square feet.
450 square feet?
450.
450, okay. And the, and does that first unit also extend to the basement?
No.
No. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. This project got strong support from the Abotters. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrone from the Office of Council, Lady Edwards. The councilor would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
With design review?
Do you need a design review, Jeff?
Yes, please.
Okay. Then with a design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling BOA 955-733-95 Prescott Street. This is a construction of six residential dwelling units, with three of the nine existing ancillary off-street parking spaces located at 370 Bremen Street. A three-story structure with two dwelling units per floor and exterior combine two lots into one lot to be known as 93-95 Prescott. Violation's Article 25, Section 5, this is flood hazard district. Article 53, Section 8, a multifamily dwelling unit is a forbidden use. Article 53, Section 9, the lot area for additional dwelling unit is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the front yard setback requirement is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the side yard setback requirement is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard setback requirement is insufficient. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking, ancillary, existing off-street parking, three spaces located, a lot across the street at 370 Bremen Street, is less than 400 feet of distance in the same district is a conditional use. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. And Article 27T, this is in the East Boston iPod. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Attorney Diane Monica, 24 Hanes Street, East Boston. And with me is the project designer, David Di Benedetto, and representative of LAR Properties, Celeste Meyer. Cue it. Thank you. Yes, we return to the board. We were here last year regarding this project, and we come in with a change. It is a project, as you indicated, that proposes to demolish two existing dilapidated one-family homes on Prescott Street in East Boston, and construct in its place, combine the two lots, and construct in its place a building with six units. Now, this is, these two lots share two different districts. 93 is in a neighborhood shopping district, and 95 is in a three-family district. You know, by right, they would've been able to build two three-families, obviously with some variances, but it seems more cost-effective and efficient to build one building with the six units. We return with...
Excuse me?
Yeah, we return with parking.
Counselor, oh, so last time you did not have parking, but it was still six units?
Yes.
Okay. So tell us how you've accommodated the parking.
Okay, so LAR Properties owns an existing licensed parking lot at 370 Bremen Street. That was approved by the city in 2015 and received its new premises end of January of 2016. At the time, there were nine spaces in that lot, six of which are allocated for a building at 365 Chelsea Street. So this lot is in the back of 365 Chelsea Street. However, there are three unassigned spots in that parking lot, and the family, which is the LAR Properties, the Roberto family, determined that they could assign those spaces, three of those spaces, to the units on 93-95 Prescott Street, which I think is being called 95 Prescott Street now. In addition to that, as the plans indicate, there are lots of alternate options for public transit, as well as private transit.
Just a quick question. So if this parking is going to be accommodated at 365 Chelsea Street...
No, 370.
I'm sorry, 370 Bremen, yes. Then shouldn't that have an appeal process, too? Because that's for ancillary parking, just to make sure that it's documented and that it's on the record that, and because, you know, buildings are here for a long period of time. We want to make sure that should, should there be a proposal for 370 Bremen Street, that there is something on record that speaks to the fact that this actually accommodates ancillary parking for this address? And a second address?
Well, Madam Shear, I had this discussion with the plans examiner, but they insisted that since it's a pre-existing lot, it's properly licensed, there are three assigned spots, there are three spots in there that are not assigned, what we could do is go back into ISD, change and correct the use of premises to include, even though the original plan, of which we have a copy, was stamped for nine spaces. Six spaces are allocated to that first project, and that's in the decision that was written about 365 Chelsea. So I believe on the use of premises, it could say, three spots allocated for the other property, we've, you know, for Prescott Street. And now, I think there is a reference to it as ancillary parking in any event, you know, it is, I think it's ancillary parking for 365 Chelsea anyway. So the lot itself has been approved. It was actually pre-existing for 20 years with those spots, it was just never legalized. So I mean, I think there's a way to protect it, you could put it as a proviso on this decision. You know, my problem is that this application with the changed circumstances was filed in January. Due to a number of delays internally at ISD, we're just getting here.
You know, um, yes.
I hate to have to go home and come back.
You know, the fact of the matter is, yes, there is a way of accommodating it as a proviso, but we just need assurance that in fact, the, that we see 370 Bremen at some point shortly with the ancillary parking for both 365 Chelsea and 93-95 Prescott. The goal is not to, is to make sure that you, that if you've done everything right, that this, that this works. However, we just need to make sure that the long-term viability of the community is maintained, because all of a sudden, you know, 365, 370 Bremen gets constructed, there's a loss of nine spaces, which makes a difference to a community. So we'll figure that out, but in the meantime, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are adequate. I do have one question. There's a reference, respect the access to the roof deck that calls it a bulkhead, and I assume that means headhouse.
Correct.
The drawings do not show the size of it.
I have one. I submitted, we did submit it to ISD, so I...
Okay, it's not part of the set of plans?
No, it meets the requirements, so it's under the square footage that is required.
Under the square footage?
Yeah.
Okay, and there's a common stairwell that accesses the...
Correct.
Okay. Any reason using bulkhead opposed to headhouse?
I think I bring it on another project, and that's what they were calling it, and you know.
Okay, so these show the dimensions.
And who's the architect on this project?
Architect Frank Curtis. He's the executive architect. We are with the firm, Curtis Di Benedetto and Associates. So I'm the project designer representative.
Any other questions from the board?
The drawings are adequate with this. Counsel, are these for homeownership, or are they for rental?
They're for rentals, at this point in time. This is the Roberto family. They have a business called Spinelli's Banquet Hall and pastry shop in East Boston, and they, they have been very involved in the community, and they have been basically providing rental housing, very upgraded rental housing at really reasonable rates for the community. So at this point, that, that is the plan, is that it will be rental. I might also say that the city of Boston assessed, has assessed this lot as commercial and parking lot. So it's on the books as that, and in addition to that, like I said, the use of premises. I guess what I would just ask, Madam Shear, before you take any motions, is are you suggesting that the motion would, the motion would cover us for today, and then we'd just work it out administratively with ISD as to the new use of premises, if you were to approve this project?
Well, let me think about that, okay? In the meantime, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. The developer addressed the concerns of the Abotters, and also got the support from Eagle Hill Civic Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrone from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The councilor would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please? And I think, as I think this through, that we should see 370 Bremen as ancillary parking, and it should mention both, both project, both addresses.
Well, I don't understand, so what would that entail?
That would entail a low-level appeal, because that could even come to subcommittee, because you've already done the process, okay? But in the meantime, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve VPDA design review. Would you like to approve the...
Yes, yes, and that parking, three parking spaces will be provided at 370 Bremen Street.
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Calling BOA 937-986-50 Putnam Street. This is seeking to extend living space into the basement for Unit 1. No work to be done. The violation's Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Dan, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's Attorney Matt McElroy. Dr. Agnes Scott, with the business adjunct of 15 Broad Street in Boston. With me is Stan Klebner, on behalf of 50 Putnam Street. As mentioned, all we're seeking to do this morning is to legalize the existing space in the basement for Unit 1. This unit was originally purchased with the basement completely renovated, and with the thought that it was already legalized space. It was then discovered that it hadn't been properly permitted, so we're trying to rectify that this morning. Again, there's no work to be done. The zoning district's a 3F-2000, it's an existing three-family. The basement will be comprised of, excuse me, a common utility room, which has separate access for all of the residents, and Unit 1's lower level, which will be approximately 300 square feet, with living space and a bathroom. The ceiling height is eight feet in this living space, and there'll be an interior stairwell that connects this space directly to Unit 1 on the upper level, as well as that second means of egress I mentioned to access the utility room. The only violation is FAR. It allowed a 1.0. Currently, without this space, we're at a 1.9, so it's a pre-existing violation. By legalizing this space, it'll bring the FAR to 2.14.
So the side windows are similar to the, to the windows on the sidewalk?
Correct.
So it'd be totally reliant on those two other means of egress?
Correct. There is a, there is a slope as the building goes down, however, there's not a full walkout. There's the interior stairwell, as well as the second means of egress into that common hallway.
And what's the access to the common utility space?
So there is a stairwell in the back that goes, if you look on the second page, that goes directly down a hallway to the common utility.
Okay. Do you know who did these conversions before?
I don't. We were not involved in anything prior to this. I apologize.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. This project got the support from the Abotters, and got strong support from Eagle Hill Civic Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrone from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The councilor would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
That's fine, just approve.
Just approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
BOA 952-994-704 Saratoga Street. This is a confirmed occupancy existence single-family and changed to two units by erecting addition and deck onto an existing structure. The violation's Article 27T-5, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking loading, none is proposed. Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback. And Article 53, Section 52, alteration, reconfiguration of a roof profile. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynn's, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, with me is Matthew Kramer, who is the property owner and homeowner, along with Lee Dearborn from Derby Square Architects. Madam Chair, this property is located in the, I guess, for lack of a better description these days, in the Harborview neighborhood, which is lower Orient Heights portion of East Boston. This is an existing single-family dwelling that we propose to completely renovate, preserve most of the existing structure, and convert to a two-family dwelling. Mr. Kramer intends to occupy this property with his family on the upper level, and would continue to rent out the lower level as a separate unit. This is not intended to be for homeownership. This property is located in a 2F-4000 district, and would already be pre-existing non-conforming based on the minimum lot size. Our proposal would not change much with respect to the existing lot, rather than just the vertical addition to the building and the complete renovation of the existing building. By way of relief, we would require no relief for the use, as two-family is allowed in the district, so we are proposing a conforming use. The pre-existing lot size of 2,500 square feet, again, is not being altered, although we are proposing a two-family dwelling on a pre-existing lot. Again, the frontage of the property is at 25 feet, the required is 40 feet. However, this is, again, a pre-existing condition for the existing use. We do require a variance for on the right side. We are proposing a 1.1-foot condition, which I believe is already pre-existing. We would maintain the left side of the property at seven-and-a-half feet, so we do require a variance for the seven-foot required under Article 53. Our rear yard, we're proposing, was originally much shorter with a addition that went through the community process, but based upon community input, we modified that to create a rear yard of almost about 27 feet, so we would require a variance for that. Again, a pre-existing condition that exists with a single-family dwelling, but because we are proposing a change of use and modification, we're requesting a variance. We do comply with the floor-to-air ratio, which is an 80% threshold in the 2F-4000 district. We're just slightly below that, and we would be within the height, both the height by way of stories, as well as the actual height of the building. Our open space would also be compliant with about 1,200 square feet. And the last, but not least, would be the parking, although we could look at the possibility of adding one parking space. Again, this is one of those conditions where it does not make sense to cut the curb, take away one-and-a-half parking spaces on the street in order to make accommodations for one single spot. We did have an opportunity to present this extensively through the neighborhood process, including the Harborview Neighborhood Association, who I believe has supplied a letter to the board indicating their support for this project based upon the changes we made. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions of the board.
So this addition is set back quite a bit from the street. Is there a deck proposed in that space or not?
So in the front portion of the building, we do have some outdoor space, is that correct? The front portion?
On the very front?
Yeah.
Not on the street beside, that's just really the entryway.
But the addition is, the rear addition is set back quite a bit?
Correct, yes.
And is that space proposed as deck space, or it's just a roof?
On the rear of the building?
Between the sidewalk and the rear addition on that second floor?
This portion here. Oh, is that deck? No.
Yeah, and there's no deck proposed?
No, that's just flat roof area.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. This project got strong support from the Abotters, and strong support from Harborview Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrone from the Office of Council, Lady Edwards. The councilor would also like to go on record in support.
Morning, Madam Chair, and members of the board. I'm a resident neighborhood, 127-129 Byron Street, Harborview Neighborhood Network. So I would speak in favor of this project. I went to the meetings, the community meetings, and I think it enhances the neighborhood and considers the context of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve VPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you very much. Calling BOA 945-127-164 to 170 Sumner Street. This is an addition of a fifth-floor residential unit to build in, building to be a commercial on first floor with seven residential units above. Violation's Article 9, Section 1, increase from six dwelling units to seven dwelling units is conditional. Article 27T-5, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 12, excessive FAR, additional of a full story. Article 53, Section 12, excessive height in stories. Article 53, Section 12, insufficient rear yard setback. Article 53, Section 56, insufficient parking for additional car. Article 53, Section 52, roof structure restriction. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Attorney Diane Monica, 20th floor Haynes Street, East Boston, Massachusetts. And with me is architect Doug Stefanoff. And my client, Paul Bruno, who is the president of B&amp;M Restoration and Contracting Services, who is the proponent for this proposal. This project really seeks to add an addition to the already-approved four-story building in East Boston that will comprise the seventh unit for this building. The reason we're back is because Mr. Bruno has secured financing. When they first filed for this project and it was approved, there were four floors, six units, two on each floor. And they really wanted to go with seven, but they couldn't. So now they have secured financing and are able to do so. And Doug will walk you through the plans, but let me just say that we did go through an extensive process with the community. We had in a butters meeting. There was no opposition. We also met two times with the Maverick Central Neighborhood Association, and you see, there is a letter in that packet I just handed in that indicates that they are in agreement with this proposal, with some conditions that they have asked and requested that we comply with. And secondly is there are signatures from all of the closest abutters to this project. And let me just say that this particular stretch of Sumner Street is the first two blocks of Sumner Street, right in the middle of all the development that's happening on the waterfront. However, it's more on the community side of the waterfront. And that particular block is interesting because it has a lot of old maritime buildings that are actually quite tall for the neighborhood. And so this is consistent not only with some of the older buildings, and there are pictures in our plans that show you the number of taller buildings that exist in the area, but also it's actually not as high as some of the existing new projects that are occurring on the waterfront across the street from it. So I mean, in that respect, Article 27 iPod, it's consistent in terms of scale and, of course, it has community support.
Counselor, let me just ask you, is there commercial space that's being proposed for the first floor?
I'm sorry, yes, there is.
And how many square feet is that?
It's 1958, I think.
Yeah, approximately. 12,000.
So is the block a mixture of commercial and residential, or is this going to be? I guess there is a mixture.
It's mixed use.
It's a neighborhood shopping district.
So tell us, Doug, how has this changed from the last? Is that the addition of the top floor?
Yes, so we're proposing to add a single two-bedroom unit on the top floor, comprising approximately 1,700 square feet.
Okay, so give us the walkthrough on how many, the bedroom count and the square feet.
It's 1,730 square feet. It's a two-bedroom unit. Bedrooms are on the right-hand side, and the left is a big open living space and kitchen, living, dining.
How about the rest of the units?
Each floor comprised of two units, split down the middle, approximately 1,000 square feet each, and they are also two-bedroom units. So there is six two-bedroom units on the four stories, and the fifth is a single two-bedroom on top.
And then roof structure is a violation. What is that caused by?
Well, we're adding structure to the top, so it changes the roof profile.
And you're also, is there a deck up there?
There's a deck on the fourth-floor roof, so you walk out the front of the building, and working with Maverick, we pulled that railing back three feet from the front of the building, or in terms, five feet from the back of the bays. So it's 31 feet long by approximately five and a half feet deep for private, private use only of the top floor.
And the setback actually is eight feet, eight feet, six inches from the street. So that helps with.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Drawing's adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. The developer worked with the community, and there was no opposition from the abutters and got support from Maverick Central Neighborhood Association and from the direct abutters. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'd like a motion to approve continued VPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 934-883-272, Sumner Street. This is a change of occupancy from three to a four-unit dwelling, renovate, erect an addition, and add a parking to the rear. Violation's Article 53, Section 8, MFR is forbidden use in a 3F-2000 sub-district. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 27T, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 9, additional lot areas insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 53, Section 9, the usable open space is insufficient. And Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linz, 245 Sumner Street. On behalf of the petitioner, with me is Julia Sokol, the property owner, along with Owen Thomas, who is the property architect. Madam Chair, this property is located in the Jeffries Point section of East Boston and a series of row houses which have fortunately gone under significant renovation, one by one, as you go down Sumner Street heading further into Jeffries Point. This particular building is a pre-existing three-family dwelling that we are proposing complete renovation with upgrade to life safety, as well as a vertical addition for a fourth level to create two duplex units. The total number of units is four. We are proposing to add two off-street parking spaces, unlike the previous proposal. We do actually have access off of a private way that would allow for the access to the rear of the property and to provide two off-street parking spaces without the need to add a curb cut to Sumner Street. With respect to the zoning overview, this project, the site is located in the 3F-2000 district. Again, a variance for multifamily use, because we are proposing four units, would be required. We do require a variance for the lot size, although this lot appears to have been part of a larger scheme of lots. There were some subdivisions done prior to ownership that has reduced this lot size down to 1,800 square feet. However, it is pretty consistent with the adjoining lots located on that side of Sumner Street. We don't require relief for any of the lot width, the front yard or the side yard. However, we do require relief for the rear yard. If you can see from the site plan that's been provided, for all intents and purposes, we do have sufficient rear yard to get us back to the private way. However, that is by way of an easement that will allow for parking. So no structure could ever be proposed to be located to the rear of this property, so you would have, again, well, you wouldn't have the setback from the rear of the building to the property line, you would have the experience of a rear yard that would be sufficient for Article 53 in this neighborhood.
So this rear addition goes all the way up to the fourth floor?
I'm sorry?
The rear addition, there's a rear addition proposed, right?
Correct.
And it goes all the way up to the fourth floor? Because I'm looking at this photograph, the rear yard photograph, and I see exit stairs and things like that. So you're proposing the addition all the way through essentially, including going up to the fourth floor?
That is correct. I believe it is set back somewhat, both front and rear, so it does allow for a little bit of outdoor space.
Yep.
But you can see a profile view of the property that actually shows both setback in the front and the rear. The total height of the building is 42 feet. The maximum height allowed is 35 in the neighborhood. I believe this side of Sumner Street has seen repeated proposals for upgrades and renovations of the housing stock, and this would be consistent with a number of the projects that have been approved in that section of Sumner Street. I know that's not binding upon the board, but just to provide context for the area and the changing design of the structures that exist in that section of Jeffries Point. And as I indicated, this would require only one additional parking space. There is no off-street parking associated with it because of the proposed new additional unit. We are actually providing two, so we'd be providing more parking than would actually be required for this particular proposal.
And is there any extension into the basement?
So we do show, we do have, yeah, so one of the units will have extension, Unit 1 will have extension to the basement. There'll also be available storage as well for the building.
And the utilities are separately accessed?
Separately, intended to be separately included in the building. If there's a common utility, it could be in the common area.
What are the sizes of the dwelling units? Bedroom count and sizes?
So they range from about 769 square feet to about 1,296 square feet. They're a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Drawing's adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. We hosted a butters meeting, and there were no concerns from the abutters and the direct abutters support this project. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Good morning. My name is Margaret Farmer, and I'm representing the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association. We reviewed this project on several occasions and had a very close vote, with 12 residents voting in opposition, 11 voting in favor. The major concern being the access through Emmett Place, as it is a private way, and trash removal in particular needs to be taken out through Emmett Place onto Everett Street. And there are a number of residents who are already affected by trash removal through Emmett Place.
So how do you propose responding to the trash issue?
So I think this had come up several times during the community process. We have to recall that this is a pre-existing condition already as a three-family. We have access rights.
I understand, but it's the addition that probably makes a difference there.
Yeah, so the understanding is that the access to Emmett Place was a concern for vehicles actually coming down it and causing damage to homes that abut Emmett Place on the other side. I think we've come up with a plan to either address trash on Sumner Street.
Private trash.
Or have private trash removal, either way.
Can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve continued VPDA design review, special attention to the trash, so we can get a solid answer.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling BOA 914-435-41, Sumner Street. This is to confirm as a three-family and renovate the existing structure and extend living space into the basement, erect a new roof deck. Violation's Article 27T, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linz, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, with me is Chris Lento, who is the homeowner. Madam Chair, this involves the complete rehabilitation of an existing three-family. We're proposing to maintain the occupancy as a three-family. Because of the extent of the renovations that we're proposing, there will be upgrades to both the life safety and egress for the building. We are also proposing, in addition to the renovations that will take place in the interior, this will also include a roof deck. The roof deck would be accessed only by the upper-level unit only, so it's not common to the building, and we are not proposing to access the roof deck by way of headhouse. With respect to compliance under Article 53, we pretty much comply with all the requirements, the relief necessary with the floor-to-air ratio. We do have pre-existing FAR of about 1.96. 1.96. Our new FAR would be 2.43 with the renovations and the extension of living space into the basin. We do also have a permitted setback that we're showing for the design of the roof deck, to the extent that it's non-compliant. We intend to comply through VPDA design review if that board requires that for purposes of this decision.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Drawing's adequate.
Can you hear?
Fairly. The drawing's adequate, although I don't see a designation for the base of ceiling height.
So we're at eight feet.
Eight feet? And can you give us a breakdown on the unit sizes?
Sure. The units, Unit 1, which will be duplexed, is 1,391 square feet at three bedrooms. Unit 2 would be maintained at 788 square feet, and Unit 3 at 873 square feet.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. This project got strong support from the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association and from the abutters. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
So both of you have had busy days in East Boston today, haven't you? With these 17 additional units. Good. Anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve continued VPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
It's now a little after 10:30. I'm going to call the 10:30. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals only for 10:30? Call the next case for 9:30. Calling BOA 928-836-28-MONUMENT-SQUARE. This is to construct a new single-family four-story building to replace the building torn down in 1962 on the same location. The violation's Article 62, Section 8. The number of allowed stories has been exceeded. And Article 62, Section 8, the maximum allowed height has been exceeded. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good morning, members of the board. My name is Brian Callahan. I'm a proponent of Shipway Place, Charleston, Massachusetts, with me is architect DeShant Getz, the proponent, Scott Brennan, and a buddy as well. So, you know, you folks are busy. What I will tell you about this exciting project is that it's on Historic Monument Square. Approximately 56 years ago, the existing four-story building with four units was condemned, and the posse's been vacant ever since. The proponents live at 27 Monument Square. They own the vacant lot, and they're proposing a beautiful single-family hall for the community.
Okay, so it sounds like the only violation is excessive height. What's the height that's being requested? And what is the zoning required height?
Linda will answer those questions. Thank you.
It's an RH-2000 zone, which is 35 feet and three stories. The abutting buildings are all in the, you know, above 50 feet in height, and we are proposing to match the roofline height of the immediate abutting buildings. And I approximate that at about 51.75 feet from the average grade around Monument Square and Concord Street.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Well, given that the issue is the height, when you're saying the 51.75, are you going to the roofline or the top of the headhouse?
Roofline.
Okay, because this is a massive headhouse.
And it is quite far back.
It's quite far back, but it's bigger. I mean, as you know, this board has, the whole reason about height is so you have rooflines that don't extend. Even if it's that far back, you've now got a big headhouse that is actually creating a roofline, or the appearance of a roofline is much higher.
Yeah. There are other.
Can you, the plans don't show the dimensions of the house.
Yeah, Linda, you know, just to be clear, we are pretty consistent about being very judicious about our review and our approval of headhouses. So has any option been explored other than a headhouse? A hatch, possibly?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it could be explored, definitely.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
No, I mean, that's really my only, the drawings are fine.
Okay.
We have been working with the Charleston Preservation Society, who have issued support for.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good morning, members of the board. From the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, I'd like to go on record in support. The butters meeting was held back in April, was widely attended. There were very few concerns about the height, walk-in view corridors, but a lot of people actually liked the fact that the height was staying consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. It is a historic area next to the Bunker Hill Monument. For that reason, would like to recommend VPDA design review.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, your board call Sullivan. I'm the Vice President, Councilor Michael Flaherty. Council would like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Councilor of Sabi, Georgia's office. Would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please? And I think there's a way of putting in a proviso with no headhouse or something?
Well, I think what I would suggest is that a motion to approve the VPDA design Well, I think what I would suggest is that a motion to approve the BPDAD Design Review to consider either elimination of the headhouse or a severe reduction that could arise so that it's not... I'd like to sort them.
Okay.
Are you going to put that in the proviso?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are you related to Dennis?
I'm just going to say that the Butters has a headhouse as well, so...
We don't know if that was legal or not, so, yeah.
Calling the next case?
Thank you very much.
Calling BOA 941-395, 33 to 35 Bowden Street. This is to change occupancy from five residential units and office spaces to six residential units and office space. Violation is Article 23, Section 1, off-street parking is insufficient, the residential. Name and address for the record, please.
Boarding, Mr. Secretary. Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott, Forte Miller, 28 State Street in Boston. With me, to my immediate right, is John Steenbruce, who is the proponent, developer, and owner. Also with me is Regan Ives, who is the architect from Fine Gold Alexander, passed out for the board. Just a memo outlining the minor relief requested here, as well as the floor plan showing the subject change. Quickly, just to give you some background, this is a project that was approved by the zoning board in 2015 for a historic tax credit renovation of a church, a former church on Bowden Street in Beacon Hill, North Loop of Beacon Hill. Change of occupancy was approved to five residential units, which included both the church and the abutting Vickers residence. We had support from the neighborhood group at the time. What we're coming here for now is simply to reconfigure the basement unit, which is the fifth unit, and make it into two. It is a currently, or is approved as a 4,514 square foot, five-bedroom unit, which is too large and not currently appropriate from a market standpoint. So we're seeking to split that into two two-bedroom units, which are 2,225 square feet each. And so they're still large units. We had a very productive community outreach process. We had a Butters meeting.
So, I'm sorry, so the only violation then is parking?
It's merely parking. So in 2015, we got relief for insufficient parking. This is a church that occupies essentially the whole site. There is no parking. And what we required in 2015 was 3.5, which has rounded up to four. What we require now is 4.2, which is rounded down to four. So essentially, it's the same. And we've gotten a positive review from the Beacon Hill Civic Association and no opposition whatsoever.
And it's still condominiums and mostly owner-occupied?
Correct.
Or how many of them are rentals?
No, this was owner-occupancy conversion of both buildings.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawing's adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Shanice Pimentel from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Both my predecessor and I aided in conducting the community process for this proposal, and we appreciate the applicant's cooperation and collaboration with the community. At this moment, we have no questions or concerns, and the Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Charlie Levin from Councilor Flynn's office. We'd like to also go on record in support. We contacted residents, as well as the Beacon Hill Civic Association, who are not opposed to the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor of Asabi, Georgia's office. Would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved. If you get a design review.
It's all internal, right?
Oh, yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Calling BOA 946-580-1-Merrimack Street. The applicant is seeking an extension of a conditional use permit to provide 16-for-a-fee open-air parking spaces granted by the Board of Appeal by a decision granted on May 23, 2017, attaching a two-year proviso to reappear before the board. Violation is Article 6, Section 4. Other protectional conditions and restrictions are required. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jonathan Burke. I have a business address of 44 Gloucester Street in Boston, Massachusetts. We're here seeking an extension of a conditional use variance we were granted two years ago from the board for the existing parking at 1-Merrimack Street. There's no changes to be made. We're just seeking an extension of the use we were given two years ago with a proviso to reappear before the board in two years. We met with the Downtown North Association and West End Civic Association, have support from both organizations.
Jonathan, haven't seen you here in a while. So tell me, was the proviso the last time for screening and buffering on this?
There were no conditions attached. It was just to come back to reappear before you, to get the extension, after checking with the neighborhood groups to see if we had support. There is a new owner in place, and we did work with Green Evite two years ago to install new electric vehicle signage and clean up some of the space around the bike racks on the site. The signage is on the retail space on the top.
Oh, I see why. Okay, so you basically backed the car because it's an extensive sidewalk there, essentially. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich? Is... Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Maria Lanza, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. The applicant did meet and have the support of both neighborhood groups, in the West End, the Downtown North Association, and the West End Civic Association. So with that on record, we would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Charlie Levin from Councilor Flynn's office. We'd like to also go on record in support. We spoke with residents in the area, as well as the Downtown North Association. Thanks.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor of Asabi, Georgia's office. Would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve of the two... Is it two or three years?
Two years.
Two years. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Did I hear everybody in support?
Yes.
Is anybody here in opposition? Motion carries. You're all set with that proviso.
Two years.
Two years.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA 927-851-298-Mallboro Street. This is a change of occupancy from five units to six units. The violation is Article 15, Section 1. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Ms. Pimentel, representing the applicant. With me is Attorney Donald Solomon, who is the attorney for the Condominium Association at this address. Good morning. We have a request to correct an existing condition, or to legalize an existing condition, which we believe, and we have documentation, will show that this has been in place since sometime in 1960. So actually, six units in this building. We have the list of all the owners. So Solomon can confirm that. We provided the tape and affidavit.
So let's just take a step back. So this is to legalize. Can you tell us the square footage, average square footage, and the bedroom count on these?
The... The first unit is on the ground floor. It's a... I have a percentage of ownership, 13.73% of the ownership of the building. Unit 2 on the first floor, there are two units on the first floor. So we're in the basement.
Yeah, so how many square feet averaging? No, no, no numbers. Okay.
We have on the file, let's see. It's even shown, these plans are quite dated. That's where we provided the affidavit.
Okay.
They're a full size. The lowest level is the entire floor through. On the first and second levels, there are two units. So Floor 1 has two units. Floor 2 has a floor through. And then 3 and 4 are duplexed, front and back.
Oh, yeah.
So six units in total.
Yeah.
That's 100% of the building.
So they're about... Okay. They're good-sized units, 15 or 2,000 square feet. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawing's adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Shanice Pimentel with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. In regards to the proposal to legalize an existing sixth unit in 298 Mallboro, which requires no work, my predecessor worked with the community to determine the appropriate process. There are concerns on record, however, we do not believe the concerns expressed provide enough grounds for opposition or objection on the basis of this hearing. At this moment, we have no questions or concerns. We just ask applicant continue to work with Butters, but the Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support of the proposal. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Elliot Laffer, Neighborhood Association, Back Bay. Normally, for a... Anytime someone asks for variance for FAR, we would oppose it. But this is an existing case that has been there longer than I have, and I thought I'd been there since they filled in the Back Bay. So, we are not in opposition. This is just cleaning up paperwork.
Thank you.
Just for the board's identification, it appears, well, the records would indicate that in 1986, the building applied to have this approved. The documents would indicate that it was approved at ISD, and then abandoned. We don't know what.
Okay.
But this has been a longstanding condition, and we didn't need one to have.
And it's been paying taxes as a sixth unit?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling BOA 932-467-85-PINKNEE STREET. This is to construct a rooftop addition and second-floor bay window expansion, expand living space to the basement. Violation is Article 13, Section 1. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 13, Section 1, the building height is excessive in feet. And Article 13, Section 1, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Ken Lyons for Sir Peter Wood of 85 Pinkney Street.
First class of Meyer &amp; Meyer Architects.
John Meyer for Meyer &amp; Meyer. Adam Bulmer from the UK, Sir Peter's representative.
Tell us what's being proposed.
So, there was a water damage in the prior winter, and the house is being renovated. What's proposed is additional living area in the existing footprint of the basement, a bay window for the kitchen, which is about 23 square feet, which will allow room for an eating table in the kitchen. And on the sixth floor, it's a back-filled corner to allow for a bathroom, as there's no bathroom at this level.
So how many units in this building?
It's a single-family house.
Single-family. Tell us about the use of the space in the basement, the proposed use.
So the proposed use in the basement is a caretaker's suite. There is currently living area in the basement. However, with the construction, the mechanicals actually get smaller, so there's more space available to use, which we'd like to do.
And the caretaker's unit is attached to the building, to the unit? It's not a separate entrance?
It is not. There is actually a separate entrance from Pinkney Street. There's a separate door that goes down a few steps there, but it is a single-family home, so it's not a separate unit.
Okay. And is there a roof deck being proposed?
No, there's not a roof deck proposed. There's an existing deck off the sixth floor, so it's... You could call it a terrace or a deck, because it's walkout. There's no bathroom on that level. We were able, and we're very grateful for the support of the Beacon Hill Civic Association for the basement and the bay window. While we weren't able to get their support for the bathroom on the top floor, we did get the support of the immediate Butters, who were very, very kind and understanding. It's very important to Mr. Wood, who's 73.
The drawing's adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Jamie Howell Walton from Councilor Josh Saikum's office. We'd like to go in record in support of the bay window and basement work. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Shanice Pimentel from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. My predecessor conducted a community process for the proposal. We acknowledge the community's concerns. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support, given the applicant's continued efforts with the community in regards to noise and debris mitigation and enforcement of trademen's work hours. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Jamie Howell from Councilor Saikum's office. We'd like to go in record in opposition of the rooftop addition.
Okay. Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve that the bay window is the only exterior work, correct?
The bay window's exterior and the bathroom on the top floor, which, for a 73-year-old gentleman, we're hoping the board will...
Okay. So I'll make a motion to include Design Review in it.
Second.
No, it's Beacon Hill Civic Association.
Beacon Hill store, so...
So it's straight approval. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Calling BOA 954-611-722, East Fourth Street. This is to confirm occupancy as a single-family dwelling, change to a two-family dwelling, form alterations in existing residence, maintaining bedroom count, adding secondary front entry for ground-floor unit and additional kitchen, new deck, and second means of egress on an existing rear addition roof to be renovated and accommodate required loading and protectors. Violation is Article 68, Section 33. Off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the height requirement is excessive. And Article 27S, Section 5, this is in a South Boston iPod. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maranci, an attorney with business address, 351 West Broadway in South Boston. To my far right is Chris McFannia, the property owner, and Kishner. Sitting between us is Mark Landsberg, project architect. Madam Chair, members, this is an application to take an existing, single-family building with present record of legal occupancy, which is why the application recites confirming occupancy as a single, and change the occupancy to a two-family dwelling. There would be renovations to the building, essentially a reapportionment of existing gross-floor area within the building. The... There would be no parking added. The zoning refusal letter cites two violations, as well as applicability of the South Boston interim planning overlay district. One of the cited violations is for excessive building height. This is actually in a earlier citation. The building is just under 40 feet at its maximum height level. This is an MFR zoning sub-district under Article 68, where the maximum height is 40 feet. The height of the building is not increased above the existing height. There is, as I mentioned, the citation for insufficient off-street parking, which is really the only violation for the board. And I point out with respect to that, that the present building currently has six bedrooms, which can be verified through the assessing department's website information. The proposed reapportionment of the space within the building and the creation of a second unit would result in two three-bedroom units. So no increase in bedroom count despite the additional unit. Mark Landsberg is here. As I say, he's the architect. He can take any questions, if any members have questions about the building, the architectural plans. Otherwise, any questions on zoning, I can be willing to answer those now.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawing's adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Haley Hillen from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Charlie Levin, Councilor Flynn's office. Would like to go on record in support as well.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor of Asabi, Georgia's office. Would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA 943-635-294-NORthern Avenue. This is a change of occupancy, include a wireless communication facility, installation of Abingo wireless antennas under the roof ramming of a stage area. Violation is Article 9, Section 1, extension of a non-conforming use. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is Adam Braylar with Prince Lobell.
on behalf of the applicant, Abingo Wireless. I think with me, my far right, is Matt Prestivo. He's the Senior Director, Designer at Tectonic. He's the engineer for the project. Director to my right is Nick Misalaki, who is the Project Manager for the project. So, we're here in connection...
So, this is for wireless communication?
Correct.
Yes, so, do you have renderings of what this is going to look like?
We do, yes.
Please, can you share those with us? So, what are the interested modules?
Right, with respect to the proposal of sheet C as a Charlie 2, which shows a rendering of the pavilion and a location of where we proposed to install the antennas, as well as the cabinetry in the back of the property. And then sheet...
So, am I looking at this correctly? It's blue and red?
That's correct. Blue antennas will be one and a half to two feet by one dimensionally, and the red antennas will be one by one antennas, so it'll be a total of six antennas. And these would be located up inside the steel structure that holds up the tent pavilion, and they will be painted to match the color of the tent, as well as the steel structure, which is white.
How are the plans, Mr. Wood?
Plans are fine a little bit. I don't think it's Blue Hills Bank Pavilion anymore, right?
It's not, it's not.
So, the plans are fine.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Chi Levin, Councilor Funt's office. We'd like to go on record in support as well.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Do you have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 948-411-15-Vicksburg Street. This is an install a curb cut with four ancillary parking spaces to be used exclusively for 576 East Second Street. Violation Article 68, Section 7, ancillary parking for four spaces to be used exclusively, off-street parking by the adjacent building of the same ownership in the residential zone as a conditional use. Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking location, off-street parking cannot be located in the required front yard setback area. Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking design, access driver maneuverability. And Article 68, Section 31, off-street parking, screening, and buffering. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is George Marancy, I'm an attorney with business address at 351 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, it's a very straightforward application. My client, Frank Hattler, owns the buildings at 572-574 East Second Street, as well as the abutting 576 East Second Street. The parcel in question, 15 Vicksburg, is located to the rear of both of these buildings. It's currently an undeveloped lot of just over 1,000 square feet. There is a garden shed on it. The proposal is to turn this into four parking spaces, so two tandem spaces for a total of four vehicles. It is a separate lot. The spaces would be for the use of the building at 576 East Second Street, which of course makes it ancillary parking, which is a conditional use. In terms of the refusal letter, there is a citation here for off-street parking location shall not be located in the front yard. There is no front yard parking here, because there is no building on the lot. If anything, it's to the rear of the building at 576, but again, the lot in question is 15 Vicksburg. There is no building, you can't have a front yard without a building. Also, violation cited for access driver maneuverability. Again, this is owed simply to the fact that these are two tandem slots for a total of four vehicles. These are all standard regulation-sized parking spaces, and there's a citation here for screening and buffering. If approved by the Board, there would of course be appropriate... There's already a fence along the left side of the property. There would be a complete enclosure of the lot by appropriate fencing.
And the proposed driveway, where would it be? Would it be bang smack in the middle of that entranceway?
It would be on Vicksburg Street, so it wouldn't be a driveway as such. It would simply be four cars pulled into the lot. If members look at the photographs page of the handout, you can see the lot in question on the left. You can then see a view down from the building at 572-74 into the latte and the existing garden shed. That's where the four vehicles would be parked. And then there's a street view showing where the curb cut would be in front of the lot on Vicksburg Street. I assume that would be a standard 10-foot cut with 12 feet, including the flares.
How are the plans, Mr. Wood?
As Mr. Marancy described, I mean, the one unfortunate thing about this is you've got a 20-foot curb cut, which is...
Oh, sorry, I think that's just as drawn. I mean, this obviously has to be approved by DTW. I don't think that they would necessarily go with an 18... Yeah, you're right. Shown as 18... No, actually, I'm sorry.
Shown as 20.
Shown as 20? Yeah, I don't think that that would actually... In particular, there's BRI Design Review, which I suspect will be the case, since there will need to be buffering. I assume that that may be reduced a bit.
Right. The issue is that I can't quite figure out how it'll work unless it's 20...
Yeah, exactly. I'm sorry, when I said, I misspoke when I said 10 feet. I think it probably does, will need to be maybe 16 feet or something like that.
They're two tandems here. Pretty close.
Yeah, it will probably need to be at least 16 feet.
All right, well, then, that'll have to be dealt with designer review. Other than that, I mean, the drawings are straightforward, but that's a concern.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Chi Levin, Councilor Funt's office. We'd like to also go on record in support. The meeting went well, and we contacted the abutters who were in support. Thanks.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Karen Foley, Counselor Sabi George's office. We'd like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Do you have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with VPDA design review, specifically concerning the width of the floor.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck. We're going to take a few minutes break, and we will resume at 11:15.
I take an outside of the room in conformance with the open meeting while this meeting is being livestreamed. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to go back to the 10:30 hearings. Maybe some people are outside when I call for deferrals or withdrawals. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30? Address, counsel?
Yes, 820 Morrissey Boulevard.
For 10:30?
Yes.
Yeah. Calling case BOA 946-625-820, William T. Morrissey Boulevard. Name and address for the record, please.
Kelly Frey. I represent the owners of 820 Morrissey Boulevard from the law firm Mintz Levin One Financial Center. The applicant's requesting a brief deferral of a month. We've been through a robust public process and gotten a significant amount of public support, including over 500 petition signatures, 100 letters of support of the project.
So you're requesting a short deferral, then?
Yes. We found out moments ago that there was one final meeting that needs to take place. We're working quickly to get that meeting scheduled. We're working quickly to get it scheduled for next week, and we'd ask for one month.
May I have a motion?
Want to turn it for a second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
You can do August 13th.
Perfect. That would be ideal.
August 13th or no?
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30 cases only? Address, sir?
64 Pudres.
For the record, calling BOA 940-761-64-PUDRES. Name and address for the record, please.
Thomas Payet, 34 Century Lane, Milton, Mass.
And are you requesting a deferral?
A deferral. I was contacted. I was asked by Neighborhood Services to get a deferral till September to, so we could facilitate a little bit more discussion on the project.
May I have a motion, please?
Take a motion for deferral.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
9:17 at 11:30.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals?
Just to clarify, that the applicant can ask for a deferral, and if it's at the request of the applicant, we usually approve it. In fact, we always do. Okay?
So the community has to, you know, two minutes to go on the deferral?
Not on the deferral, no, but, but...
Oh, yes, thank you.
Okay?
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30? Hearing none, we'll go right back to the 9:30s. Calling X case, calling BOA 938-912-164-Boston Street. This is to extend living space to the basement for bathroom and bedrooms for Unit 1. Violation's Article 65, Section 9. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Don Duraco, 164 Boston Street, Unit 1.
That's what you're proposing to do.
I've been living at 164 Boston Street for about 14 years, and the Unit 1 consists of the first floor and the basement, and the basement's been used as partial living space, mostly storage, and there's a utility room down there. I've been working with ISD, the zoning department, Neighborhood Services, McCormick Civic Association.
So what do you want, what are you proposing to do with the basement space?
I'm proposing to add a bathroom and have the space reclassified from storage to two bedrooms.
And so there's how many units in the building?
There are three.
And is there, are there utilities in the basement?
Yes.
And do they have a separate means of accessing those units?
Yes, they do, through a bulkhead that is public.
Okay. Besides the bathroom, will there be a bedroom or anything?
There'll be two, there'll be two bedrooms.
And what's the floor-to-ceiling height?
About eight feet, two inches.
Okay. Did I cover everything, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, what did you say in response to the chair's question about access to the utilities? Because I don't see that.
It's through, there's a bulkhead at the rear of the building that, that accesses to the utility room.
We have to go outside?
Yes.
I believe it's supposed to be internal access.
I met with ISD and kind of went through all the plans, and they, they approved it. And I, and I went through the...
Miss, Miss Ehrlich? I think we can address this through no building code relief.
Okay.
Yeah, so it has, it went through the whole code compliance review by the ISD. We put in new staircase, we put in window wells, so it was reviewed very thoroughly by ISD, and they're aware of that.
But I think the chair's suggestion is, is a good one, because I'm all concerned about this.
And it's, it's just water heaters that are located in the utility room.
No, I can see that. It shows on throughout. What is the ceiling height in the basement?
Eight feet, two inches.
And any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. There was a Butters meeting held on-site in April with full support from the Butters of the neighborhood. We'd like to go on record and support this project.
Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair and the members of the board. My name is Stephen Keely. I reside at 3 Bellflower Street, one short block from 164 Boston Street. I'd like to support this project. The applicant has been a great neighbor. It's a family-owned home, and I request that again approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckern, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make two motions. One is that there is no building code relief, and the other is approval of the applicant's proposal.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Calling BOA 928-023-326-Dorchester Street. This is a gut renovation of existing three-family to remain a three-family, extension of living space in the basement for Unit 1 at ground floor and create a duplex unit in portion of the basement. New systems, fire protection to be added, no change of use, no change of footprint of the building, and no additional dwelling units. The violation's Article 13, Section 13-1, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive in Article 27S, Section 5. This is in the South Boston iPod. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacass, Lacass Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the applicant. To my left is George Katus, one of the principals of the owner of the property, and to my right, sorry, right, is Dan Artige from Embark Studio, the architect for the project. This is a proposal to gut renovate an existing three-family dwelling, and it shall remain three-family dwelling units with extension of living space into a portion of the basement. The other portion of the basement will be common utility, trash storage, bicycle storage, and other storage area for the units. The two zoning issues before the board today, one is it's in the South Boston iPod overlay district, although it's not governed by Article 68, and second is excessive floor area ratio with the extension of living space into the basement. We exceed the permissible floor area ratio by approximately 300 square feet.
So tell us what the floor-to-ceiling height is in the basement?
In the basement, the floor-to-ceiling height will be eight feet. We'll have to excavate one foot down, but it'll be eight feet of living space.
Okay. And so that's the dining and kitchen. Is there a roof deck proposed on this?
No roof deck.
No, there's not.
No. Okay, and the FAR, what is it currently, and, oh, what's required, I'm sorry. This is an L1, so it's 1.0. What's, what is this FAR here?
So it is, it's, it's both L1 and multifamily residential, Madam Chair. The boundary of the zoning district literally cuts right through the middle of the lot, so there is Article 12, Section 1 of the code, which indicates that if a lot is bisected by two different code provisions, the less restrictive shall apply, which in this case would be the more generous one, if you will. So in the MFR, the FAR is 2.0, and the proposal here is for 2.14.
Okay, thank you. Tell the plans, Mr. Ehrlich.
Join your advocate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Chi London from Counselor Flynn's office. We'd also like to go on record in support through the community process with residents in the InterSquare Civic Association. They worked with them on the bedrooms. Two of the, two of the issues were three bedrooms for each unit, as well as resident parking concerns, and they were, they were helpful to address those issues. Thanks.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Counselor Asabi Georgie's office, and we'd like to go in support of this project in also echoing Counselor Flynn's about the three bedrooms per unit in request for the residents not having resident parking in the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Let's do approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 902-135-3-Dorset Street. This is to remove the existing single-family dwelling and build a new four-unit residential building with five indoor parking. The violation's Article 65, Section 8. The MFR is forbidden in the 3FD 3,000 sub-district. Article 65, Section 9, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci, an attorney with a business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I'm joined by my client, the owner of Petitioner, Stuart Malali. Madam Chair, members, in front of the board members, plans for proposed four-unit dwelling building at 3 Dorset Street in Dorchester. The relevant zoning sub-district is 3FD 3,000 under Article 65. There would be four units, so there would all be two-bedroom units, approximately 1,100 square feet each. There would be three roof decks as shown on, two roof decks, I'm sorry, as shown on Sheet A 1.5, and they would be solely for the use of Unit 3 owner and the Unit 4 owner. The roof decks would be approximately 12 feet by 13 feet. Access to them would be by means of a common hatch. The cited violations are insufficient lot size, excessive FAR, the maximum FAR in the sub-district is 1.3. The resulting FAR here would be 1.65. 300 square feet of usable open space are required per dwelling unit with these roof decks. The proposed usable open space would be 186 square feet per dwelling unit. There are setbacks cited on the front yard setback. This is a corner lot. It's on the corner of Dorset and Dorchester Avenue. The building has been pulled back predominantly on the Dorchester Ave side, but also a bit on the Dorset Street side, and there is cross-corner visibility. There's actually a fairly large landscape area at the corner. There are violations also cited for a side yard setback. The minimum required is five feet, provided is 3.5, and a rear yard setback with the shallow lot exception would be 10 feet. There's a four feet provided. Article 65 requires 1.25 parking space per unit for anywhere from four to nine units. Here, four units would result in five required off-street parking spaces. There are, in fact, five off-street parking spaces provided in the garage with access off of Dorset Street, and these are shown on Sheet A 1.2. Of the four units, so one is in fact a group, group one accessible unit, that would be Unit 1. It's made accessible, I should say, by the, by the access lift, a lula that is provided with a separate entrance at grade level for Unit 1 to access that lift, which runs to the second floor only into, into the Unit 1 interior.
Okay. Tell Arthur those plans look good. What's garage door plans?
I'm sorry?
Garage doors, because I know we...
Yes.
Thank you for, tell him thanks for listening. Mr. Ehrlich, how are the plans?
Join your advocate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. There was an Butters meeting held on-site in April. The applicant also went through several rounds of informal discussions with the Butters and neighbors to accommodate many of their concerns, including the indoor parking and design. We'd like to go on record in support of this project. We would just ask that the applicant continue reaching out to the Butters and Civic Association.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of board, Joe McEckern, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to echo the sentiments of the mayor's office and go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, Justice Counselor Michael Flaherty. Counselor, do on record support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Counselor Asabi Georgie's office. We'd like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Morning, Madam Chair and the members of the board. The petitioner has attended informal meetings for design dis-
Just put your name and address on the record, please. I know you're in Bellflower.
I'm so sorry. My name is Stephen Keely. I reside at 3 Bellflower Street, one short block from the development. The petitioner has, I'm a member of the McCormick Civic Association. The petitioner did attend informal meetings for design and spatial use of the property. At those meetings, let me go back one more step. The petitioner didn't attend the last meeting, which was a vote in support or opposition to the project. In those informal meetings and here today, the petitioner has failed to prove a hardship as defined by the zoning court code. There's no mention of special or peculiar conditions of land, such as narrowness of lot, shallowness of lot, shape of lot, exceptional topography conditions. There's no reason for a practical difficulty or substantial hardship. The granting of these six variances, which are not minimal variances, would not be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code. Again, I beg the board to deny these allowances. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moranci, can you speak to the public process?
Mr. Stuart?
Are you guys usually there when there, when there is a vote taken?
Yeah, the vote was the last, was the final meeting that I wasn't 100% aware of. There was a meeting a week previous, which was kind of a zoning meeting with the McCormick. This is the third, third time I've met with the McCormick. Everybody seemed to be on board. The neighbors are all on board. So...
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't realize, to be honest, with the last meeting.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
I want to make a motion to approve continued BPDA design to be...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set for that proviso.
It's now 11:35. I'm going to call the 11:30s for deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30. Counsel, do you have something?
Good morning, sorry.
Address, please.
Client's outside in the corridor. 181 Colridge Street, please.
For the record, calling BOA 892-077-181 to 183 Colridge Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Dennis Quilty, Attorney McDermott Quilty and Miller, representing the applicant. Here to unfortunately request a deferral, but we think for very good reason. We are, have been in 18 months of communication and deliberations with the community organizations in East Boston. I've had a very close working relationship with the BPDA staff. They've asked us to come back and conduct another series of meetings. We meet with them internally on the 16th of this month. They want us to do a community meeting following that. We're trying to figure out...
How long a deferral, time are you seeking? Is it a couple of months?
No, 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 no. We want to do, we have issues on the ownership side that require us to try to get back to you as early as possible. The recommended date to fit in BPDA board action and come to you, we request September 17th if we can fit in possibly on that agenda.
Sorry, September 17th? I just didn't hear you. Is that September 17th?
September 17th, ma'am.
Okay. May I have a motion for deferral?
Motion for to defer.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We do have 9:17 as open, so 11:30 and 9:17.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30? Okay. We'll head back to the 10:30s.
9:30.
I mean, 9:30, geez. Calling BOA 929-574-49-Rogers Street. This is to direct a new seven-unit residential building with garage parking, roof deck, and a newly created combined lot of 3,540 square feet and raise the existing one-family dwelling. Violation's Article 13, Section 1, the lot area is insufficient. Article 13, Section 1, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article 13, Section 1, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 13, Section 1, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 13, Section 1, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 13, Section 1, the front yard is insufficient. Article 13, Section 1, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 13, Section 1, the building height is excessive in stories. And Article 23, Section 9, the parking design maneuvering area is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci, an attorney with a business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I'm joined by my client, property owner and petitioner, Stuart Malali. Madam Chair, members, this is a proposal for seven-unit dwelling building at 49 Rogers Street in South Boston. This is one of the few areas in South Boston that are still not governed by base code. This is located in an L.5 sub-district. Certain of the dimensional requirements can fall to the nearest HR or S district. In this case, the nearest base code residential district is Unit 1. The proposal is for seven units. These would be seven two-bedroom units. Unit 1 would be the largest, that is, the square feet. The additional units is roughly 900, 1,000 square feet, 950 about. The lot size is 3,540 square feet. The resulting FAR is 2.18 in the L.5. Point 5 is, of course, the maximum FAR. Rest of South Boston, everybody, Article 68, the maximum FAR, too. There are cited violations for building height in feet and building height in stories. Under this zoning, the maximum height of a residential building is two and a half stories, 35 feet. This building is in fact not violative of maximum requirement in terms of linear feet. It's only 33 and a half feet tall, but it is in fact a three-story dwelling, so there is a height violation with respect to story height. Usable open space required under the base code is 400 square feet per dwelling unit. Here, 55 square feet per dwelling unit is being provided, and that is by the three roof decks that are dedicated to using units 5, 6, and 7. There is a minimum lot size inefficiency under base code, minimum required for even a solid family of 5,000 square feet. So there is actually an 11,000 square foot requirement under the general code for seven-unit building. This building, at only seven units, a little bit unusual, and then will make use of a stacking system with respect to parking. The stackers are visible on Sheet A 1.1 of the stacking areas, and we'll note there are six stackers. These are three trays each. In other words, two V-velves, and there's always one open tray in the stacker. So six times two is 12, which is the 12 parking spaces that are being provided for the seven units. And the point of Unit 1 is entirely located at the ground floor level, and it's a one-unit.
And the access to the roof decks?
The access to the roof decks, as shown on plans, this might be three head houses, which I would fully expect that if there were a motion to approve this, that it would be a proviso for special attention by BPDA to the, to the head houses.
Yeah, because there's a possibility of perhaps combining them or coming up with something, some other option.
Yes, as I say, not to jump to conclusions, but if there were a motion to approve, I would suspect that the BPDA would be asked to look closely at the head houses. head houses.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, uh, that was one of the issues. I mean, this is not just a head house, it's a big head house. The drawings don't show the dimensions. Do you know what they are?
Yeah, so they're, they look like they're about seven feet in width and, uh, maybe 90, yeah, maybe 90.
No, I know, no, no, they're definitely bigger than that.
But regardless, they're-
Anyway, anyway, they're, they are large. Um, so I, I would, if there is a motion to approve, it certainly should involve that. Uh, the other question I have, on A1.1, unit one is described as group one accessible. What does that mean?
Handicap. Accessible.
But group, why group one? Is that, is that referring to the population, the-
Sorry?
That's just a term?
Yes, group, group one just refers to excessive, uh, the level of accessibility, exactly.
Is anybody, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Charlie Levin from Council of Flynn's office. Uh, we'd also like to go on record in support, uh, due to strong community process and support that we heard from residents in the Andrew Square Civic Association. Thanks.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, Office of the Council, Michael Flaherty, Council of the Record, support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Council of Asabi, Georgia's office. Would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with, uh, BPDA design review with special attention to either eliminating or reducing the size of the head house.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling BOA 948-360-44THOMASPARK. This is to renovate an existing one-fam, one-family dwelling and change legal occupancy to a two-family dwelling and add two rear decks and egress stairs. The violation's Article 68, Section 33. Off-street parking is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, side yard setback rate is insufficient. And this is 27S, Section 5. It's in the South Boston I-V. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moransy, Attorney for Business Address at 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, the owner of this property is Joyce Higgins. Joyce purchased this building with her ex-husband in 1990. Uh, she's been living there, uh, since then. Uh, she has a grown son who, uh, is actually planning on, uh, moving into this building after it is converted to a two-family dwelling. Uh, essentially, we're talking about reapportionment of the existing, uh, space within the building. There is a slight uptick of, uh, FAR just in some areas that we've not counted as gross floor area, become gross floor area because they get included as living space. So, it's currently a 1.81. The result would be 1.88, uh, which is compliant. Uh, there's no change with respect to, uh, obviously, the lot size or width. Uh, the building height, usable open space, uh, is, uh, met by this. The requirement is 200 square feet per dwelling unit. Even with a second unit, it would be about 3.26 square feet. There would be, uh, uh, new decks in the rear. The, uh, there is a violation cited for the, uh, the side yard setback, and, uh, as the board looks, uh, actually on the front page, uh, with the, the site plan and landscape plan, uh, that is caused not by the building as such. Uh, it's caused by the, uh, the roof decks. Uh, I'm sorry, the, uh, the rear decks. One deck is being removed, an existing one, and then, uh, there will be essentially a fourth level, our rear deck, a rear porch structure approximately 16 feet by 7 feet deep, and this, uh, provides open space and will also provide, uh, um, egress, uh, from the rear of the building. Uh, there would be egress. Uh, the other, um, violation is for, a cited violation is for, uh, rear yard insufficiency. Uh, this, I do believe is an error, uh, with, uh, shallow law exception. There's only a 15-foot rear yard setback requirement here, which, uh, I, I believe, uh, is met even with the, uh, the rear decks. And finally, it is cited for I-V.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Uh, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Charlie Levin from Council of Flynn's office. We'd also like to go on record in support as well. Thanks.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Council of Asabi, Georgia's office. Would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with continued, uh, we don't need BPDA design review, but motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the first case for 10:30. Calling BOA 928-966-17CHESTNUTAVENUE. This is seeking to change the occupancy from commercial to a three-family residential building. Also renovate the building, including a one-story addition. Violation's Article 55, Section 40. Off-street parking is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the lot area is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, additional lot area is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 55, Section 9, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 55, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, front yard is insufficient. And Article 55, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Eckle with D'Argo and Toscano with the business address of 15 Broad Street here in Boston. With me at the table is Thomas Falcucci, the owner of 17 Chestnut Ave. We're seeking to change the occupancy of the structure from a commercial space to a three-family dwelling. Also to renovate the building and include a one-story addition. The structure's been abandoned for a number of years. As mentioned, it previously housed, uh, commercial use. However, the neighborhood is predominantly residential. The zoning sub-district is a 3F 5,000, so the use isn't allowed use, and the total lot size is just over 2,000 square feet. In terms of the floor plan, floors one through three will each contain one unit. They'll have an average unit size of 1,130 square feet, and they'll all be two-bedroom units. The basement will be used for common storage and, and utilities. There won't be any living space there. In terms of the violations, we are seeking variances for minimum lot area. You're required to have 3,000. As I mentioned, we have just over 2,000. Floor error ratio, you're allowed a .6. We're at 2.18. This is a pre-existing violation. However, we're, uh, increasing it with the third floor. Building height, you're allowed to go up to 35 feet. We're at 37 feet 9 inches. Open space, we're required to have 1,200 square feet. We have 54 squeep, 54 square feet per unit, and that's based on new proposed decking. Uh, because there's already an existing structure there, we really can't get any more open space. And finally, parking, you're required to have one space per new unit for a total of three parking spaces. We have the one existing parking space. Uh, the other dimensional regulations, front, side, and rear yard are all pre-existing. We're not increasing the footprint of the building at all. The remaining structure is staying. Uh, we had a very positive, uh, community process with both an abutters meeting and appeared before the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council. Uh, they supported the change of the use because it is so predominantly residential, and they voted to support the project as a whole. With that, I'll pause and take any questions or comments from the board.
How are the plans, um, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawing's are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Enrique Pepin from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on record in support of this project. They have been through the community process, and they have also gotten the approval from the JPNC. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Will Poff Webster from City Council, Matt O'Malley's office, representing Jamaica Plain. We'd also like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, Office of the Council, Michael Flaherty, Council of the Record, support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Uh, the design review?
No, there's one-story addition.
Oh, that's right.
You know, I have a borough street example in my head, Mark-
Okay.
-that I cannot shake. Provo, BRA, design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, Jeff, make sure it's contextual, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Calling BOA 927-541-67FORESTHILLSTREET. This is to build a new three, three-family home, a new curb cut. Violate Article 55, Section 9, front yard, existing building alignment. Name and address for the record, please. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning. Rick Ames, Next Space Studios Architects here in Boston, working with Jake Hart and Irene Klein. Um, they've owned the, Jake's lived in the neighborhood since the mid-'70s. They've owned the property since 1994. It's a two-family lot. Uh, they need to move down to the ground floor, so they're proposing to build a three-family building on the existing lot, a fully accessible unit, four spots. We actually still believe this is an out-of-right project, but because of street alignment, we are needing to get a variance to set the house back far enough. If you go to the last two pages, it pretty much tells the whole story. There are two grand 150-year-old oak trees in the front yard. We would like to preserve those. In order to preserve those, we need to set the building back from the required modal set. Um, the, the diagram before that shows the, what we're proposing to do. Uh, so it's really, instead of the 13-foot modal setback, which we sent Tana as a great plan reviewer, I understand is urban perspective. This part of Jamaica Plain is sort of pretty loose in its streetscape, and we're proposing to set it back to keep those two oaks, which I think in community process, there was pretty universal support of doing that.
And so tell us how the parking works?
Excuse me?
How the parking would work?
If you look on the front page, there's an existing and a proposed.
So that would be a side driveway, and it would be under the building, one-
One spot's under the building for the owners, and then there's three in the rear yard.
And so is there a unit that's basically handicapped accessible or accessible in some way?
The front, the first floor unit is accessible for them, yes.
From both front and back?
We're going to put a lift in the back because it's up higher, yes.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawing's are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Enrique Pepin from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record, uh, uh, support. Uh, they have the support from all the abutters. They had the abutters meeting back in, back in May, and, uh, they have the support also from the local neighborhood association.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Will Poff Webster from City Council, Matt O'Malley's office. We'd like to rec, um, echo the, uh, thoughts from ONS and just add that Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council also went on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, Office of the Council, Michael Flaherty, Council of the Record, support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, uh, BPDA design review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
This product really needs a design review.
Yes.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA 943-624-118MARcella STREET. This is a three-family associated parking nominal fee requesting pending a board approval. Combine two lots into one to be known as 118 Marcella. Violation's Article 32, Section 9. This is G-Cod enforcement. Article 50, Section 28. A three-family detached dwelling with an R-H zoning is forbidden. Article 50, Section 29. The building height is excessive in stories. Article 50, Section 29. The building height is excessive in feet. And Article 50, Section 29. The side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joseph Feaster from the law firm of Mackenzie and Associates, 183 State Street in Boston. To my immediate right is my colleague from the firm, Timothy Fraser, who hopefully will take over once I retire. Uh, next to him-
That's never going to happen.
Not as long as you're sitting his chair, Madam Chair. Uh, Cameron Zahidi from Urbana Co., who is the principal here, and next to him is Stephen Chung, who is the architect. Knowing what the board wants to know early on in the process, I just wanted to clarify, and I just gave to the, the secretary a copy of, we're cited for the G-code, uh, G-Cod in this particular matter. We don't believe that it is necessary in the-
Is it G-Cod or G-Pod?
G-Cod.
No, G-Cod. And we don't think, we have a map which, uh, on the constant groundwater conservation overlay, just should, we don't see that the property's included. However, would I've advised my client that we will accept a variance in that regard in any event, but I wanted to at least provide a copy of the map to the, to the board. Uh, just to give some information on the project, uh, this is a project which was part of the RFP process by the Department of Neighborhood Development. The project went through an extensive community involvement and received the support of the community in that respect. It is, uh, three units, uh, with, uh, three bedrooms, two baths. Uh, the unit sizes are, um-
1250 to 13, 13.
Unit one is 1,300 square, square feet, 1,330 square feet. Unit two is 1,300 square feet, and unit three, which is on the third floor, is 1260, 1,260 square feet. The violations that we were, that we are seeking a variance on, I mentioned about the G, G-Cod, um-
So this is a rowhouse district, therefore a freestanding house is, is, um-
And that's the reason why it's forbidden, and that the use is forbidden here, uh, in this particular, under this circumstance, Madam Chair.
The height and in stories and-
The stories are, three stories is what is allowed. We are proposing four. Um, the height of the building that's allowed is 35 feet. We are, we're at 39. Uh, and the side yard, the, because of the positioning of where the DN, the Department of Neighborhood Development wanted the house to be next to or connected to the building, on one, we're, we're required to have five feet, and we have one. On the other side, where it's 10, we have 13.6, so we're, on one side, we are short of the requirements, uh, and seeking a variance on that.
And how is parking going to work on this side?
All right, I'm going to have Mr. Chung or Mr. Zahidi talk to you about the project.
Well, there's a, there's a substantial slope, and, uh, working with DND, basically, they recommended that we create a drive, which goes and follows a slope down underneath the building. So, the building is sort of three and a half stories actually from the street, so three parking underneath the building.
And this is a B-Trust building?
That's correct.
Correct. How are the plans, um, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawing's are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, and we'd like to go on record to support. Um, they did go through an extensive community, community process, and there was a lot of support for the project. Um, they'd also like to see a much-needed housing stock in the area.
Good morning. My name is Weldon Bodrick. Uh, I'm here on behalf of Counselor Janie. I would like, uh, she would like to go on the record in support of this project. Thank you.
Uh, Jonathan Spleen, Department of Neighborhood Development. We would like to go on record, uh, supporting the project as it is a DND-led project that went through a full community process. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Just one question, Counselor. Are these all affordable units?
No, they are not. This is part of-
They're all market?
They're market rate units. This was part of the process. Department of Neighborhood Development, uh, had a number of parcels, Madam Chair, in that neighborhood, and they designed it to meet the neighbors' concern to have a mixture of incomes which would be allow, uh, which would be allowed there. So, there are several other larger parcels which, uh, which provided the affordability. So, these are all market rate.
And may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Uh, Mr. Ehrlich, DND does their own designs, so we don't have to sign off on their work.
Okay, so straight, straight, straight approval motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling BOA 946-295-327CARTAGECOURT. This is a rooftop deck and head house for unit one. Violate Article 7, Section 4. Roof tech, roof deck or head house, other protectional conditions. Article 50, Section 38, design review. Name and address for the record, please.
Private Gus Adaro, 11 Vegetage Street. Um, approximately about a year ago, year and change ago, we were here in front of you guys to build a triplex, and since then we built it, and the owner, uh, has requested, uh, wanted a roof deck, uh, which actually is pretty nice for the, uh, community.
Now, the, the, I'll just tell you upfront that the BRA recommends denial without prejudice, that the head house is too- that the headhouse is too large visually and contextually. It detracts from the proposed project. Is... And also, it's not contextual within the community. So you have to really think through the headhouse piece, okay?
We'll be more than happy to work with the BPDA for that. We do have support from 36 abutters.
So tell us about the project, because the Office of Neighborhood Services will tell us about community process, but you tell us about the project itself.
So the project is a triplex, three-rowhouse that was just recently built. And on one of the units, the front unit, the owner's unit, they want to build a roof deck with a... The actual protrusion is not the roof deck itself. It's the access from inside of the building with the stairs that goes up to the roof. And the reason why it looks big is because the building is very small and narrow on the picture.
Okay. Mr. Ehrlich, how are the plans?
Well, the headhouse is sort of... It looks like a billboard on top of the... It's got this nice mansard roof, and then this massive seven-foot-six-high billboard-like face that is three-quarters of the roofline. So, I mean, it's got to get redesigned.
That's fine. And if the board finds it well to approve it, we'll work with the BPDA and shrink it to the size that's appropriate.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christine Brendel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. We had an abutters meeting, which was successful, as well as they have support from DSNI. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the BPDA design review with special attention to either reducing or eliminating the headhouse.
Can we just say eliminate?
It's okay with me.
Okay, eliminate the headhouse.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. What that provides, you're all set.
Calling BOA 914-212-79 Devon Street. This is a change of occupancy from a three-family to a four-family. Build a staircase from the first floor to the basement. Dig basement 12 inches to meet the ceiling height requirement. The violation is Article 8, Section 7, the use is forbidden. Article 50, Section 29, excessive FAR. Article 50, Section 20, number of allowed habitable stories has been exceeded. And Article 50, Section 29, insufficient open space. Name and address for the record, please.
Raynan Westerling, 79 Devon Street, Porchester.
Thank you. So tell us what's being proposed. So is this the... Is the fourth unit, proposed fourth unit, going to be in the basement? Or is it going to be... Where is it going to be?
It is in the basement, yes. So it was at one point used illegally as a residential space. And when I renovated the building, I've been now for five or six years. It hasn't... That space has been vacant for that time. And then there's plenty of space there. It's kind of like half above grade. And we're going to sprinkle the building, and there's plenty of ceiling height. We have to change a little bit of... There's one spare area. We have to bring it down a little bit to make sure there's sufficient ceiling height. But otherwise, it's...
And what are the sizes of the units?
It'll be a three-bedroom. So there's three bedrooms on the first floor. Basically, it's three bedrooms up, first, second, and then the third floor is two.
And how many square feet?
1,300, 2,300, 1,300 square feet.
So each unit is over 1,000 square feet?
Yes.
Okay. And, okay. And is this owner occupied?
Yeah. No, it is...
It's not owner occupied? Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, this is the first time I've seen them. But in terms of extending living space in the basement, they seem to have met all the requirements.
Any questions from the board? How are you accommodating parking?
There's quite a bit of parking there. The lot, there's an entryway that goes in. Each unit will have its own space. And there's actually more than that for... There's more than four spaces there presently.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, and we'd like to go on record to support the project. He met with the abutters and also the Neighborhood Association in May, who had no objections. And the space seems to be consistent with some of the units on the street.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling BOA 734-154-14 Gleason Street. Oh, there you go. Okay. This is a change of occupancy from four to five residential units. An additional dwelling unit in the basement, interior renovations to all units. The violation is Article 60, Section 40, insufficient off-street parking. Article 60, Section 8, a multi-family dwelling is forbidden use. Article 60, Section 9, additional lot areas insufficient. Article 60, Section 9.3, the location of the main entrance. And Article 9, Section 2, a change in the non-conforming use. Name and address for the record, please.
Raynan Westerling, that's 14 Gleason Street. So when I purchased this property, it was... The basement was used as an illegal church. And so it's... The ceiling height is quite high. It's actually a very large space. And it's been vacant now for quite some time as well. No use. And the other units are... I renovated those units. And they're all performing nicely, and everything's going well.
So how many bedrooms are the other units?
The first floor is a four-bedroom, and then it's... Everything else is a two-bedroom.
Okay, and this is... This unit in the basement is proposed to be what?
Three bedrooms.
Three bedrooms?
I have by far the highest demand for three bedrooms.
Pardon?
I have the highest demand for three bedrooms in this area.
Yeah, that makes sense. What's the floor-to-ceiling height?
About 3,000.
The ceiling height? The ceiling height's seven...
7,10.
7,10?
10.
Okay. And tell us about the location of the main entrance. Is there supposed to be a rear or a side entrance to this?
So the way we're... It will actually be... It will come off the side, but it will have its... And we're going to have a walkway that'll come around to the Gleason Street. So it'll come off the side of the building, but actually, it'll be located right neck... Right near the Gleason Street. It'll have like a paved area that'll go to... Right to Gleason Street. And then it'll be... The other egress will be on the other side.
Okay. And tell us about parking.
There is... Each unit will have its own space. It's not... But it would just be one space per unit. But there is sufficient parking for each...
This is a violation, and Gleason is insufficient parking?
We're going to have to pave an area to add space. There is enough footage there, but there's... Right now, there's presently a garage, a space to the left of the garage. And then we'll have another two spaces that are to the left of that. But there is quite a bit of area in that for parking.
We have two existing parking there now. We have space for another, additional, three parking space. So the civilians are trying to work on that now. And then we don't...
So you're trying to meet the requirement?
Yes, to meet the requirement.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Christine Brendel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Like to go on record in support. They did go to the Civic Association several times as well. We had an abutters meeting. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
NextCase calling BOA 942-244-36 REA, Parkman Street. This is the subdivide 36 REA, Parkman Ave., Lot B, 1B, to contain 5,394 square feet and have a two-family dwelling erected on it with 30... From 36 Parkman Avenue, Lot 1A, to contain 6,000 square feet and have an existing one-family dwelling on it. Violation to Article 65, Section 64-41.4. Off-street parking location is front yard. Article 65-65-41.5. Off-street parking design, access, drive, and maneuverability. Article 65, Section 9, the lot size to erect a new dwelling is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the lot area for additional dwelling unit is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the lot frontage requirement is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 65, Section 9, the height is excessive in stories. Name and address for the record, please.
Russell Fordsberg, 19 Fairview Avenue, Abington, Massachusetts. Along with me is the property owner, Adam Crowley. We are here today to seek permission from the board to subdivide 36 Parkman Street to two properties to construct a two-unit building to the rear of the primary structure of 36 Parkman Street. In going through the process of design, Mr. Crowley's desire was to propose a structure which would meet the size and massing and the shape in general aesthetics of the buildings which surround the property itself. It is proposed to be a three-story structure with a full basement with siding and roofing to match, again, in keeping with the surrounding properties. You can see from the side and rear elevations that, in fact, the aesthetics are being maintained there with some rather liberal plantings and green space to be maintained on the property. I would like to point out that even through the subdivision that the two resulting lots will be of comparable size to surrounding properties in the neighborhood as well.
So, excuse me, Russ. So all access will be through that driveway and nothing through the passageway?
There's actually a street poppin place along the side.
But there's not going to be any access to the second?
Not specifically access through that, no. No.
And is there a reason for that?
There's some issues relative... There was some issues relative to rights of passage along that way, which we're trying to resolve at this particular point. It's very likely that we will have those resolved prior to commencement of construction.
Yes, because I'm just thinking about if you need cross-easements for that driveway...
Right.
To accommodate both. And frankly, I'm not a big fan of a building in front of a building.
Mm-hmm, right.
You know, and so...
No, it would be our anticipation that we will have that matter resolved. We just, at this time of hearing, we had not resolved that quite yet. And that's something that our intentions are to do. So in all likelihood, that'll be supplemental only.
Okay.
The structure itself, as mentioned, three stories, full basement. The basement's to be utilized for storage and mechanical purposes only. There'll be no habitable space down there. First floor, kitchen, bathroom, living room. The second and third floor spaces, primarily bedroom and bath, with a master suite on either side above. The units themselves, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bathrooms, 1,829 square feet per unit. In going through the process, Mr. Crowley did solicit the approval of his abutters, which has been introduced as evidence at today's hearing, as well as securing the approval of the Fields Corner Civic Association, which has also been introduced.
So one more question. So this off-street parking and design, is that considered front yard parking? Is that considered front yard parking?
That's considered front yard parking.
Okay.
Right.
Yep, it is, yeah. Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kwan Fan from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood and Services. Would like to go on record in support. The applicant did receive full support from the director of abutters and the abutters of surrounding area and also the local civic group. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Dustin Gardner, on behalf of City Council President Andrea Campbell's office. We'd also like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe McGeckren, City Council, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. I'm Assistant Counselor Michael Flaherty. Council's going to record.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Russ, and if anything changes, you should bring it back for board final arbiter, so it's all set.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Calling BOA 937-775-596 to 598 Beach Street. Beach Street here. List to remodel existing rooms, bathrooms, attic area, build a new dormer and add them to the living space of the second-floor unit. Remove a section of the attic that was affected by fire and rebuild. The violation is Article 67, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Shelby Conyers, 550... Could be homeowner, could be former owner.
Did you put your name and address on the record?
Shelby Conyers, 550...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm having a hearing today. So tell us what's being proposed. So you're proposing to build a new dormer for second floor at the... Okay? And Doug, what's the change in FAR? How many square feet is this new dormer addition?
Dormer will be extending on the left side by eight feet, one inch by 21 feet.
Eight by 21, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe Carpenter from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this project. They've completed their community process and have received support from their abutters. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Walter Applewhite, Councilor McCarthy's office. We'd also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please? I know Beach Street. I live just off of Beach Street. But the other end of Beach Street. So may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling BOA 938-001-48 Lakeside Avenue. List to combine two parcels under the same ownership and erect a three-townhouse-style residential unit. The violation is Article 69, Section 18. The lot size to erect is insufficient.
I was going to give it a chance.
Name and address for the record, please.
Garnett Brown, 142 Almont Street.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Teddy Herrick Swann, I live this address up to Dobson Road, Brayford, Massachusetts. Today is Mr. Garnett Brown, who is the owner of the property. Madam Chair, we're here today seeking relief to combine parcels and erect a three-townhouse-style residential unit. The zoning sub-district is the Conservation Protection Sub-District, CPS, which requires us to have one acre of lot, a different three units. So we're combining the two lots. One of the lots is 42,000 square feet. We have a lot of 7,220 square feet.
So the intent of the CPS was to maintain as much open space? And so are these buildings close to the street? I don't have plans in front of me, but are they close to the street? Or how are they laid out to maintain as much open space as possible?
We have a 50-foot front yard, 50-foot side, and 50-foot backyard.
Madam Chair, with all the dimensional regulations, we need them all. The only reason that we are here is a footnote in Table D of the zoning code, which states that if the lots are assessed as separate parcels,
that if the not, if the lots are assessed as separate parcels, then the ZPA has to authorize the construction of them.
So, I'm good, I'm going to go back to the CPS and just help me understand how this is placed on the site so that there is as much contiguous open, open space and preservation of, of green space. Are these as close to the street, I don't know Lakeside Ave, are these as close to Lakeside Ave as possible?
Can we give this to you as a site plan and the data? I don't know if you can see it, but this...
I'm fairly blind, because you haven't been able to tell.
So, this is the footprint where we're going to build the three units.
Yes.
This is Lakeside right here. This is the smaller piece of land. This is the bigger one. So, with that being said, with over, with over an acre of space, we'll have fifty-foot from the curb, from the street, fifty-foot from the pond, fifty-foot from the side, and well over fifty feet on that side.
So, does that fifty feet give you enough of a buffer for wetlands and open space?
Yes, yes, it does.
It does?
Yeah.
Well, that's interesting. And how large is each unit?
Each unit's approximately two-thousand-one square feet.
One unit is going to be a little bit bigger than that.
Okay, and these are three bedrooms?
Four bedrooms, two and a half baths.
And two car garages?
Yes, one unit will have three garages.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Well, I hadn't seen the drawings before, so I'm just looking at them now. They're interesting. They look like they come from a website or something. There's no, there's no stamp by a design professional on them, which is required by S.D.
No.
Give the architect a bracket on this.
So, my, um, the architect is at our forum on plans, a company out of New Hampshire. They did not put the stamps on these plans yet because we need to get approved first for them to stamp, to stamp the...
Well, we have a little bit of a chicken and egg because we can't prove without a stamp.
Can I call my builder?
You're at a hearing, young man. We just need to deal with business here. Okay, so, so we have a question here. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ryan Flynn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, representing Hyde Park. And a butters meeting was held on April twenty-ninth, and we didn't encounter any opposition from the community regarding the proposal, so we want to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Walter Appelwhite, Counsel McCarthy's office, we'd also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? You know, Jeff, this is the second project with CPS. The first was on the Bird Streets in West Roxbury lately, which, you know, does not really truly reflect the intent of the CPS. Is there anything that BRA staff can do at an earlier stage to kind of guide the developers about the intent, the real intent of that CPS sub-district? And I just put that out there because I don't think there are very many of these parcels left in the city. I mean, um...
No, and actually, we, we did do something back in two thousand, which is what this footnote refers to, because it does kick it to the Board of Appeal. If this footnote wasn't there, it would be as of right.
Yes, but, but, but still, if we can push it further, because, you know, fifty-foot front yard is quite, quite generous, you know, whereas it would open up more true habitat space in the rear yard. So, obviously, you can see this is something that's near and dear to my, to my heart, but, you know, because that was really the intent of it initially. So, I just throw it out there just to see, and I'm, and I'm appreciative of the footnote, but if there's anything else that can be done to that, to ensure that this is, that more open space someplace else or a more extensive swath is, is allowed on these developments. In the meantime, may I have a motion, please?
This isn't, this company doesn't, it's not modular, right, in terms of it?
No, it's a stick-built.
It's a stick-built, okay. Well, so, I'm going to make a motion to approve the BPDA design review, but I'm going to suggest we hold, we're going to say we're going to hold signature until you get an architect's stamp.
That's fine, we'll get it. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA nine-four-eight, two-four-two, six-six-six, sixty-six Metropolitan Avenue. This is to convert an existing three-family dwelling into a six-family dwelling. The violation's Article ten, section one, limitation of parking area or front yard location. Article sixty-nine, section nine, the lot size requirement is insufficient. Article sixty-nine, section nine, usable open space is insufficient. Article sixty-nine, section twenty-nine, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. And Article sixty-nine, section eight, a multi-family dwelling unit is a forbidden use. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Attorney John Pugini, Ten Forbes Road, Braintree. With me is Tony Ferrara, who is the owner of the property. Six-six-six Metropolitan Ave, zoning here is two-F five-thousand. The location, as far as the violations, I'll go through those quickly. Limitation of parking area, front yard, that is an existing situation. There's one parking spot that's located in the front left of the property. Lot size requirement insufficient. It's a, again, because it's a two-F five-thousand zone, usable, usable open space is insufficient. Actually, part of this process is we're taking down a garage and some sheds to create parking in the rear. Off-street parking is insufficient. Reclining in Hyde Park is six. We are at five. And multi-family forbidden because it's a two-F five-thousand. By way of where this property is located, it's directly across from the old Hyde Park High School. It's with New Mission High School right now. Street is all threes with some six families, as well as we have, Gary Associates has their commercial property located there as well.
So, how are you creating these three units?
They're existing. It's, this is basically legalizing the use. This has been, I've included in the package that you, I have given to the board, city of Boston assessing records. You'll see that for, I think, thirty-three years, this has been a six-family assessed as such by the city of Boston. So, we're really, he came into ownership about, I think, eight years ago, so it's just to legalize the use as a six-family. We had in the butters meeting, no opposition. There's been no opposition to date. I provided the, I think, eight letters of support from director butters. Everybody in the neighborhood has always viewed this as a six-family, but because it's been used as a six-family for so long.
So, Unit two and three-B, I cannot read, are those three-thousand-square-foot units or five-thousand-square-foot units?
So, no, the three-bedroom, the three units are all five-room, three bedrooms. Those are fifteen-hundred square feet. And then there are three smaller units, two of which are five-hundred-and-eighty-four square feet. They're one bedrooms, and then one is four-hundred-and-ninety square feet, which is one bedroom. Again, these are all existing. Part of this would be to legalize the use as well as sprinkle the building and build, bring it up to building code.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Well, they just got clarified because it said convert three to six on the advertisement.
Oh.
And then every single drawing said existing plans, no changes. I'm thinking, how can you go from three to six without making any changes? So, it's a question just legalizing the existing conditions and transfer.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Brian Flynn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And a butters meeting was held on May ninth with no opposition from the community. We want to go on record in full support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Walter Appelwhite, Counsel McCarthy's office. We'd also like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA nine-five-one, eight-zero-three, forty-one Rexford Street. This is convert attic to an apartment with dormers. The violation's Article sixty, section eight. A three-family is forbidden use in a two-F six-thousand sub-district. Article sixty, section nine, the proposed building height is excessive in stories. Article sixty, section nine, usable open space is insufficient. And Article sixty, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Carl Brenius, forty-one Rexford Street, Maryland, Mass.
So, tell us what's being proposed.
What's being proposed is just two dormers, dormers are being added on each side of the building. And just converting the attic into a living space.
So, this would be converting from a, so, so this is, I'm sorry, this is converting, is this a one-family or a two-family?
This is currently a two-family with three levels.
Two-family, three levels. And what's the use of the attic space?
Currently, it's vacant. It's just empty.
What are you proposing to use it for?
I'm proposing to move my family, which is growing up, into the attic.
Okay. So, okay. And is there any living space in the basement?
The basement is, has space, but it's not, like, currently livable.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The drawings are adequate.
Is this the architect on that one?
E-T-I-V design.
Yep, okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. We need to listen with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We held in a butters meeting back in May for this property. The owner has also been in contact with the Neighborhood Association, the Rexford Group, and they have no concerns about this project. Thus, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services supports.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Walter Appelwhite, Counsel McCarthy's office. The counsel would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of Justice Counsel Lodge, Michael Flaherty, the counsel would go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Jeff, you don't need to sign anything. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you, have a good day.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA nine-four-five, one-five-nine, forty-two-twenty-eight to forty-two-thirty, Washington Street. This is a change of occupancy language from the restaurant to Beergarden. No work to be done. The violation's Article sixty-seven, section eleven. Barra Beergarden is a conditional use in a C-C-one sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is John Lenzikum. I live at Nineteen Kenton Road in Jamaica Plain.
So, tell us, what's this establishment that you're looking at?
This is a historic building in Rosendale Center, which is known as the Substation, if you're familiar with Rosendale. This was a substation used for the Boston Transit Authority.
So, are you Trillium?
No, I'm not Trillium. I'm the owner of Turtle Swamp Brewing in Jamaica Plain. We're the Jamaica Plain Brewery.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe Carpenter from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. John and the Turtle Swamp team have been an asset since coming into the Substation temporarily, and we look forward to hopefully seeing them there permanently. Thank you. I even have letters of support here.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Walter Appelwhite, Counsel McCarthy's office. The counsel would like to support this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of Justice Counsel Lodge, Michael Flaherty, the counsel would go on record in support.
And you'll be using the ground floor and the basement or just the basic floor?
We'll be using pretty much the first floor. There are bathrooms and other common areas which have, will be accessible. And a small storage area on the first floor.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Did you want a taste?
We don't serve food, sir. We are not a restaurant.
Yes. So, motion carries. So, you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling BOA nine-four-four, seven-zero-one, seventy-six Quint Avenue. This is change an existing four-bedroom basement apartment into a one-bedroom apartment and a two-bedroom apartment, resulting in a change of arguments from eleven apartments to twelve apartments. The violation's Article fifty-one, section fifty-six. Off-street parking is insufficient. And Article fifty-one, section nine, usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Jonathan Kates, seventeen Chesnut Street, Boston. The subject property is located at seventy-six Quint Avenue. This is an existing eleven-unit apartment building that we have owned and managed for over twenty years. The proposed prop...
Now, this is an apart, it's rental, then?
Yes.
And who are your primary clients?
Clients?
Students or...
No, young professionals.
Young professionals. And what's their average tenure in the building?
The average, I'm sorry?
Tenure in the building.
You mean, how long do they stay?
Yep.
Two to three years. Sometimes four, I mean, rarely longer. Fairly transient. The proposed project involves taking an existing four-bedroom apartment and converting into two smaller units, a two-bedroom apartment and a one-bedroom apartment. The existing four-bedroom is in need of renovation and is a rambling layout. The proposed project involves...
So, tell me, how many square feet is the proposed two-bedrooms?
Roughly nine-hundred.
And the one-bedroom?
Roughly seven-hundred.
Okay.
And they fit inside the existing footprint of the existing four-bedroom.
Okay, and let's see. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support of this proposal. We had a butters meeting on May thirteenth, and they went on to receive support from the Austin Civic Association. There should be a letter from the President, Tony DiSodoro, on file. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Daniel Palanca, we have Counsel Moaxiomo, counsel would go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Calling the last case for ten-thirties. BOA nine-four-one, four-nine-seven, eighty-eight Wallingford Road. This is a change of argument from a two to a three family, convert an unfinished third-floor attic space into a habitable unit, and construction of an exterior stair from a proposed new unit to the ground as a second means of egress. The violation's Article fifty-one, section eight. Three-family is forbidden in a two-F five-thousand sub-district. And Article fifty-one, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is Keith Moncel. I reside on Woburn Ave in Newton, and to my right is my architect, Paul Pressman, also of Newton. As a way of a little bit of background, in the mid-seventies, my wife Martha and I bought and moved into eighty-seven Wallingford Road across the street. I had our first child there. A few years later, we bought the building at eighty-eight Wallingford Road, where my child resided as a tenant a number of years ago. I've always wanted to make the large attic a third unit, as it seems an incredible waste of space, and that's what I've...
Let me just backtrack, because, you know, this is a residential neighborhood. How are you proposing to get that third unit in the basement?
No, it's not in the basement, yeah.
I mean, sorry, in the attic, sorry, in the attic.
Oh, it's an existing...
Because it's, it looks like it's two, if I'm looking at, you have eighty-eight Wallingford, yeah. Looks like it's a very interestingly designed building. How are you proposing to add that attic space?
We're not changing the exterior of the building at all, except we are adding a re, to the rear. We are adding a second means of egress. There currently is an existing internal staircase to the unused attic space.
And how, what, how many square feet is that proposed attic space?
About eleven-hundred square feet.
Okay, and what were the violations?
The two violations are use forbidden, three-family and a two-family zone, and the other is building height excessive, however, it is existing building.
Yep, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The drawings are adequate.
And how is parking being provided?
Parking, there are currently four parking spaces in the back. I propose one per unit. There would be a total of three units, so there would be one additional space.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Like to go on record as support of this proposal. We held an Abutters meeting on May 6th. It was well-attended. No concerns from the neighbors. With the parking example. They also received support from the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Daniel Palanco. We have Council Mark Ciamo. Also like to go on record as support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We're going to take a five-minute break, and we will return at 12:45.
...
The violation is Article 55, Section 19, multi-family is forbidden. Article 55, Section 20, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 55, Section 20, the height is excessive. Article 55, Section 20, usable open space is insufficient. Article 55, Section 40, off-street parking is insufficient. And Article 55, Section 40, off-street loading is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Attorney Matt Echol with Dregón Toscano, the business address of 15 Broad Street here in Boston. To my immediate right is Josh Fetterman from City Realty, the project proponent. To my far right is Dan Artegius, the project architect from M-Bark. As mentioned, we're seeking to combine two lots, raise the existing structure that is on one of those lots, and erect a four-story mixed-use building with one retail space of 100, 720 square feet and 23 rental units. They'll also have six accompanying parking spaces.
Are these micro units?
They are not micro units, no.
Okay.
Four of the 23 units will be live-work units on the first floor, and four of the units will be affordable. Of those affordables, three will be at 70 percent AMI and one will be at 40 percent. Zoning sub-district is a local industrial and the total lot size is 11,736 square feet. This project is fully compliant with the JP Rocks guidelines and is located less than a quarter of a mile away from the Green Street MBTA station. In terms of the floor plan, there'll be the six exterior parking spaces in the rear of the property. The four live-work units, as I mentioned, will be on the first floor along with the one retail space, a lobby, trash room, sprinkler room, and bike room. Levels two and three will each have seven units per floor, and the fourth floor will have five units. In terms of the zoning, as I mentioned, we are JP Rocks compliant. However, under the underlying zoning, we will be seeking a few variances. The first is use. MFR in a local industrial is forbidden. The floor-to-air ratio allowed is 1.0. We're at 1.68. Height, you're allowed three stories and 35 feet. We're at four and 46 feet, eight and a half inches. And parking, you're required to have 1.5 spaces per dwelling unit. We have the six total spaces I mentioned. This project went through the full BPDA-
There's not the loading?
Loading?
There's no off-street loading, so all loading?
Oh, there is not a loading zone, no?
So anybody moving into the building or moving out of the building would have to car on the street?
Correct. So we actually, through the community process, we, um, we handled that question with the community. There's basically a driveway and we created a spot in the rear of the property that's not a designated parking space that could be used for off-street loading because the on-street unloading was an issue with the community. So we did work to resolve that even though it's not an official loading station.
Okay.
Uh, this project did go through the BPDA small project review process and was approved by the BPDA board back in March. Since then, we've had continuous conversations and discussions with both the Union Ave Group of Butters and members of the community at large, and we've agreed to continue to work with them on pedestrian safety, which was a major issue, as well as, um, any redesigns to the building which may be necessary. However, we've already redesigned it multiple times. We've agreed to street trees as well as screening and buffering and fencing with our direct abutters. We've also agreed to do a mural on the exterior of the building as well as feature artwork on the interior lobby to be completed by the JP Arts Council artists. And we're also committed to continuing to work with these local neighborhood groups on other ongoing matters.
So, um, please clarify, screening and buffering is on the rear and the side property at 191 GREEN?
Correct. To the right, there'll likely be a fence to be decided on with the direct abutters there. And then in the rear, we've worked with a landscape architect to come up with a tree plan as well as a fence of their liking.
And, um, the artist's live-work space, will you build it out or is it just considered raw space?
No, it'll be built out.
It will be built out?
They'll have kitchenettes and bathrooms and the rest of the, you know, will be-
Okay. So it looks like, I mean, given the size, it just looks for somebody who does graphic design or something small and simple like that versus something, somebody who's going to do more, you know, other kinds of, um, art, artistic work.
That is true. Based on size, there are a few bigger ones. One of the rear is 790 square feet. Uh, the design was to have this walkway to promote some, some foot traffic, um, so the idea would hopefully to bring some people in. Um, but based on the size, once they're built out, that'll be tailored by what kind of artists they are.
And these will be registered with the, um, BPDA and also with the arts, uh, department here, the city's arts department?
Yes, and through the process, it was requested that these be the IDP units, so they will all be part of the IDP.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Um, the drawings are adequate. I just, uh, this is not a question about drawings, but, um, when we were deferred last time, I, I live a few blocks away, so I recall there was some discussion about, uh, an MOU being discussed with community groups about over a series of issues, and that was one of the reasons for the deferral.
Yeah, so there were some questions around three tenancies and also some other issues that we've, uh, we've responded to. We've cleared up most of them and we've committed to continue meeting with the group to talk about some of the-
Okay.
So what's outstanding?
Um, continue meeting with the Eggleston Square Neighborhood Association. They want to discuss future plans on, uh, anti-displacement policies and just the, our impact in the neighborhood, and we've committed to continue those. We've been meeting with them, uh, over recent months and we're going to keep doing that.
Okay. Is any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the board, my name is Enrique Pepin from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We understand that, we would like to go on record in support of this project. We understand that City Realty has had, um, previous issues with the community and tenants, but we believe that City Realty will continue to work with the community in good faith to reach an MOU. Also, City Realty has worked with the Union Ave Neighborhood Association to adhere to the request if the project is approved. Other than that, there's, I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Just put your hands up so I can just see the number of people.
Sorry, I'm actually not speaking in support or opposition at this time. My name is George Lee with the group Keep It 100, and I guess, just asking if-
I'm sorry, what's your name and address?
My name is George Lee, Aid Woodrow Ave, and I'm with the group Keep It 100 for-
Aid Woodrow, uh, where?
In Dorchester.
Okay.
But I work with the group Keep It 100 for Real Affordable Housing and Racial Justice in Jamaica Plain. And I guess I would ask, um, the, the board if you would, um, indulge us with maybe another 20 minutes to talk to City Realty because we just had some conversations in the hallway to try to resolve a few issues, and our understanding was that we would get an email confirming yes to some of those issues, but the email we got was very vague and short and, um, we would love to support this project, but we just want some more clarity in writing. Uh, so we'll just ask for a 20-minute, um, a little more time.
Hold on, hold on. So, okay, thank you.
Um, I could-
But have a seat. I just want to know if anybody's here to speak in opposition because if they are, I need to get that on the record. Let me just ask you as applicants, have you sent out that email?
Yes.
You have?
They, they had a couple of issues that they wanted to ensure are future discussions included, and the response was, "We look forward to meeting you and working together to find a common ground on these issues." And I mentioned to, uh, these folks in the hallway that I've met with them in the past, and we're committed to continue meeting with them. And through the process, uh, everything that's been asked has come to, to fruition around, um, tenant protection, also around the sale of a, an abutting parcel that we own to the JP NDC at a discount for affordable housing, and we're really-
Is that the one with Pine Street?
Uh, across the street from Pine Street.
Okay.
Um, so to date, we, we just can't say it enough, but commit to continue working with them.
And actually have a list of positive things I would like to say about this project?
Yes, please do.
If we get some, if we get some resolution, and I guess I'm asking if we can have 20 more minutes?
No, you know, we've been here, I have to tell you, since 9:30, and we want to do this right by everybody, but I wouldn't like to get through my agenda because I frankly am exhausted, okay?
Okay.
So what we'll do is we'll make a decision on this. You speak whatever positively you'd like to. We'll make a decision, but you'll continue with the rest of our cases, but we, but just loop back with us to make sure everything is good from both parties, okay? So, um, so let, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve with continued-
Wait, do you want me to say my positives?
I've already asked for opposition and, uh, did anybody have any? So, will you guys? Right?
Just to sort of share the positives and the outstanding issues. So the positives are with the sale next door to JP NDC, that would actually bring the total affordability up of both parcels to 70 percent because of the combination of the partnership with the nonprofit and the affordability that this has on site. And City Realty has made progress helping extend some tenancies of folks that we were worried would have to move out from some properties, and so they have worked with us on that. Um, in addition, they've agreed to stop using a certain form of aggressive lawsuits against tenants. Um, the, what we were trying to get clarity on is if that applied to all of Jamaica Plain and Roxbury, and in the hallway, they said yes. We didn't have that in writing. If that's something you could ask them directly, if they're stopping those lawsuits in all Jamaica Plain and Roxbury, it would be helpful just to hear that out loud here. And then the final issue was, um, for them to bring back a written proposal before September explaining how they plan to keep tenants in their buildings for more than a one-year lease after they buy a new building. Again, they told us in the hallway they would be willing to do that, but we thought they were put into writing, but they haven't yet. So we're just asking if, if it's possible for the board to confirm those two things. If, if that's true, and Josh already spoke to the list of issues, then, um, our group is in support of the project because of those positives around affordability and stabilization. But if they're not in agreement, um, with the lawsuits stopping them in Jamaica Plain and Roxbury, and if they don't confirm they'll bring that proposal back before September, then we have reservations about the project. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Helen Matthews. I live at 190 GREEN STREET, um, across from 197 GREEN STREET. Um, and I'm a member of the Green Street Renters Association, which is a, an association of, uh, renters, um, primarily around this project. Um, and I want to say on behalf of our association that we have expressed consistently, uh, through the community process around this project, um, that we, uh, our support for it is contingent upon the, upon, uh, City Realty partnering with, um, a mission-based affordable housing developer for the land of, uh, at 3371 Washington Street. Um, and, um, uh, we were thrilled to say that there is, um, an agreement in the works around that-
What's your opposition? Because you put your hand up, speak in opposition. So what's your opposition based on-
Okay, I, honestly, uh, this is a complex situation. I'm not speaking in opposition. I want to, um, say that we're thrilled about the acquisition of the adjacent land, uh, by the JP NDC where they plan to build all affordable units there. And, uh, this is a, an area where there's a lot of residents who are in what you would call naturally occurring affordable housing, that are at great risk of displacement, low-income folks, many folks of color, and it's wonderful to see affordable housing being built there. So we're certainly very, very happy with that outcome.
Thank you.
I want to echo what George Lee just said, that we, um, we did have a discussion just before this meeting where, um, some agreements were made verbally around, um, around the continuing negotiations around an anti-displacement policy, um, and around the scope of the cessation of these aggressive legal tactics. And we would like to, um, we would like to see some answers, um, to those questions in writing. Um, so that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. And can you please give us new information? You're the, you are the last person to speak, so can you give us new information?
Um, my name is Lisa Thompson. I live at 10-4 STILL STREET in Jamaica Plain. Um, I agree with everything that's been said by George Lee and, and Helen here. The new information that I have is, you know, there isn't anything new, but we really need the city to support what we are trying to do. We're trying to partner with City Realty. With all of this new development, there is displacement. They can help stop that in this particular way. We just need it in writing.
Okay.
And we need your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I know you will continue your conversations because you're in front of this board often enough that we know you'll do the right thing.
Yes. I'm going to call the next four cases. Is Norwell Street here? Okay. Calling BOA 922-904-239-NORWELL STREET. There are three companion cases. BOA 922-907-241-NORWELL STREET. Case BOA 2, 922-908-243-NORWELL STREET. Case BOA 922-911-245-NORWELL STREET. So I'm going to call two cases at a time. They have the same violations, and I'll give the address, so I'm going to read it into the record. This is 239-NORWELL STREET. This is directed to one-two family building on a newly created parcel. 239-241-243-NORWELL STREET will be consolidated and then subdivided into four parcels. Each parcel will accommodate one-two family building on each and will have two off-street parking spaces. The project shall be known as 239 LOT 4. Among the proposed four two-family buildings on lot four, lots attached to family at 1655 square foot. The violation is Article 10, Section 1, to five-foot buffer required. Article 65, Section 41, insufficient parking tandem equal point seven-five. Article 65, Section 41, access and maneuvering areas to tandem. Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking loading requirements to size. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient lot size. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient lot width. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient lot width frontage. Article 65, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 65, Section 9, number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient open space. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient front yard modal alignment setback. This is the same violations for 245-NORWELL STREET, so I'm not going to read that whole purpose and violation. Uh, 241 and 240, I'm sorry. 241 and 243 are going to be the same. Um, so I'm going to read the violations. Those are the only difference. So the violation is Article 65, Section 41, access and maneuvering area minus 10 feet. Article 65, Section 41, the size. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient lot size. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient lot width. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient lot frontage. Article 65, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 65, Section 9, number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient open space per unit. And Article 65, Section 9, insufficient front yard setback and modal. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Matsuyasu with the law firm Klein-Hornig at 101 ARCH STREET in Boston, and I'm here and joined by the project architect, Andres Bernal with the firm of Place Taylor.
So tell us in total, how many units are we looking at in all these parcels that, Mr. Fortune, just write it to the record?
So there, there will be, the project will be four two-family homes, uh, for sale to income-eligible households. Uh, Mr. Lee, who's the developer, Teely Development, has committed to sell, uh, each of the two-family homes to households earning no more than 120 percent of AMI.
Sorry, 120 percent?
Correct.
In this neighborhood, what would that equal?
I'm sorry?
In this neighborhood, what would that equal?
I believe in the city of Boston, a hundred, a family, uh, for, uh, at 120 would be roughly about 130,000 or so. Um, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but that's roughly the, uh, and this is intended really for kind of workforce housing. You know, people talk about workforce housing, really just intended for, uh, folks who are living, uh, want to live in the city and work in the city. Uh, the units are, they're two-family units, like I said. One, the first floor unit will be a one-bedroom apartment, and I think the idea is that the, the home buyer can, you know, rent the one-bedroom apartment for, for income to help, you know, support the, uh, the debt service payments. Uh, this is a project that Mr. Lee has been working, uh, with the community for over a year and a half.
So what are the sizes of the one-bedrooms?
Um, the one, one-bedrooms are, uh, five and, uh, 530 square feet.
Okay. And the, and the, um, the four-bedroom units?
The four bedrooms, uh, one second, I have it somewhere in here. 1,200 square feet.
And the, those, that four-bedroom unit would be on the second and third floor?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. And this is peak roof, and there would be two parking spaces per, per building?
Per house, yes.
Yes, okay. And there's a shared driveway, and so there'll be reverse, uh, right, right of ways, okay?
For the two middle buildings, yeah. And then the two site lots would be tandem parking.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are ready.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Christine Rendell, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. Developer has been working with the community for quite some time, even prior to me getting here, um, and has been extremely helpful in, um, understanding of the community's concerns and is continuing to working with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, on behalf of City Council President, Andrea Campbell's office. We'd also like to go on record in support. They've received the support of the West of Washington Coalition. Um, he's done a lot, as, uh, the mayor's office said, to work with community, um, to, um, try and focus on locating local homeowners for these, uh, these new opportunities, and so, uh, excited to work with them moving forward.
Local means neighborhood?
Yeah.
Oh, excellent, okay. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the last case, calling BOA 904-399-37 to 39 ROYAL STREET. Royal Street here.
Mr. Fortune, I know that, uh, their representative emailed Stephanie saying that they were not moving forward with this.
Okay.
May I have a motion, then?
Make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Second.
That's because it's been withdrawn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The meeting is now adjourned.